Hello, I'm Blake Getz, Assistant Fire Chief for the City of Palm Springs Fire Department and our Community Emergency Services Coordinator. I'd like to tell you about an important forum we have to inform you about earthquakes and emergency preparedness at City Council Chambers at Palm Springs City Hall. We have assembled a panel of experts to discuss what you should do now before the big one or an earthquake of significant magnitude hits our area. There's been a lot of attention lately focused on a seismologist's prediction that a major earthquake will shake our desert area by September 5th of this year. Although the California Earthquake Prediction Evaluation Council has not endorsed this specific prediction, we are well aware that we live in earthquake country and we need to always be prepared for earthquakes. Joining us at the forum will be Rick Cook of the Riverside County Office of Emergency Services, Wayne Harrison, geologist for Riverside County, Pamela Mathewson with the local chapter of the American Red Cross, and Greg Huff, an insurance specialist. We don't know whether we'll have an earthquake before the predicted date of September 5th, but we do know that one will strike our area sometime. I want to encourage all citizens to take the necessary steps to be prepared regardless of when an earthquake happens. Please join us from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Monday, May 17th in the council chambers at Palm Springs City Hall. And if you can't be there, please watch the forum on Channel 17. I would also like to encourage everyone to stop by the Palm Springs Library to view the earthquake preparedness display and practice shutting off the gas using our gas meter at that location. Please check it out. The preparations you take now just might make a world of difference when the time comes. Don't get caught unprepared. Be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. I hope to see you there.
We'll call this meeting back to order. Close session report, please.
Yes, council, eight minutes in closed session. Items listed on the agenda for the agency in real property negotiations, the VIP item was not discussed. We did discuss real property negotiations with Westman concerning Desert Fashion Plaza. We gave a status report, no action was taken. Also, real property negotiations, Eagle Real Estate Group gave a status report, no action was taken concerning litigation matters. There's an item that is Citizens for Local Government Accountability versus the agency. We gave a status report concerning settlement negotiations. Direction was given for further negotiations. On the item listed concerning the Fairfield Development, that was not discussed. For the City of Palm Springs, the Desert Water Agency, real property negotiations, we gave a status report, direction was given for further negotiations. The litigation matter, Baskler versus City of Palm Springs, was not discussed. The Consolidated Services Engineers litigation matter was not discussed. The McGardle matter was not discussed. And the exposure to litigation and initiation of litigation were not discussed, nor was the city attorney evaluation. Oh, and the labor negotiations were not done either.
Thank you. At this time, we will stand and we'll ask Councilmember Poon Yeh to lead us in the flag salute.
Put your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have public comments. I have I have a card from the regarding the stroke activity center, stroke recovery center, that is, Ed Cuciarella, Little Spoon, please come forward at this time. And you'll have three minutes. Unless you're gonna do the full production.
Thank you, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Ed Cuciarella, a stroke survivor. Had a stroke about two years ago, and behind me are more stroke survivors. We are clients of the Stroke Recovery Center. This is a free treatment center, I don't know if you know much about it, for stroke victims who no longer have any insurance, in other words, insurance has run out. The services at this facility is free. The services they give is physical therapy, speech therapy, social interaction, and trained personnel. All this is free. Do all this for us. So why are we here? I know there's a budget crisis, and money is tight. Cuts have to be made. We stroke victims are worried. Why are we worried? It's been rumored that cuts will be made in the fire department, including the paramedics. What has this got to do with a stroke victim? A stroke survivor is most likely to have another stroke. The Stroke Center does a fantastic job of keeping us from being depressed and other therapies, but it can't cure a stroke. Why we need paramedics? When a person has a stroke, no matter what age, treatment has to be as quick as possible. There is an essence of time to prevent paralysis or death. A 911 call sends a fire department and a paramedic who is trained to administer the immediate treatment to the stroke victim. And then they send, they bring him to the hospital and to doctors so we can have a pretty even chance to get up and walk, maybe. So I would like to tell you, please do not cut the paramedics, we need them. We want to walk and live after a stroke. And the essence of time is the only thing that will do it for us. I think there's a window of three, three hours at the most, and then you're dead. But anything before that is a possibility. I made out pretty good with my stroke because it happened on a cruise ship, and they, they got me as soon as I hit the floor. And that is why we need the paramedics. Thank you.
I'd just like to ask if there are other members from the Stroke Recovery Center, if they would please stand, those who also came. Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time, you'll have three minutes. Please give your name to the clerk.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Joel Douglas. Respectfully, I'd like to just bring to your attention that regarding the road and my father, and he's not getting any younger here. Also, with regards to the film festival, Sonny Bono started 15 years ago with $100,000 festival from the city, and on the proviso that in five years it would be self-supporting. We've now tripled the time and tripled the indebtedness to the festival. I certainly am not against films. My whole family has been in it for a long time, but at what cost? When I go down and see downtown Thursday night, the mounted police with signs around their horses, they can't afford to feed them, and it's a complete voluntary situation, well, something's not right here. Something's not right. And if the film festival is so successful, as it's stated to be, the largest in North America, 84,000 participants each year, I imagine paying something to it, why is it not showing on the bottom line? I understand at the very last meeting, it was stated that $145,000 was saved from last year, but that isn't reflected either. I'm very concerned, primarily because of the police services if they get cut. I'm seeing up in Las Palmas now, I'm getting, we're getting gang graffiti on the parking lot walls that are just getting painted off. We have a tremendous population influx coming into this community. We certainly can't step down our protection and step down our, our, our police and everything when it's a time to step up. And as I say, with regards to the festival, and I've been to quite a few, and I've been a member of quite a few, at the success that they seem to enjoy, there should be sponsorship knocking the doors down. And when we are in such a budget, you know, crisis that the city is, we have to maybe step down from being the largest film festival in North America and pull in the reins a bit here to adapt to what we can afford. I remember there was a time when this city merely had to ask Dean Martin, or Bob Hope, or Kirk Douglas, and that time would be volunteered for free, you know, and given to the town for its, you know, to help support the community in every way possible. So I hope you will really look at this in your considerations. Thank you.
And thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments? Please give your name to the clerk, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mike Kovalev, President of the Palm Springs Police Officers Association. Good evening, council. First of all, I'd like to say that it was a pleasure to see Mr. Mayor and Mr. Mills at the funeral service for Mr. Kearns yesterday. I can tell you, coming from the police department, it meant a lot to see your presence there. For someone that served 34 years for this city, it was an honor to see you guys there, and it was an honor that he worked for the city. The reason why I'm here tonight is, just like I was last year about this time, seems like it was, we're talking about cutting cops again. Same thing last year, we're looking at cutting police officers, cutting fire. Yet, since then, we've spent nearly a million dollars on a visitor's center. We've spent countless millions on a convention center. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on intersections and other projects throughout the city. We're adding thousands of homes, which will increase the calls for service. We're adding, we're adding more businesses. We have a Walmart project, numerous other projects. Everywhere I drive in the city, I see more calls for service. Yet, we're talking about cutting cops. Now, this doesn't make much sense to me, because we did lose two positions last year. The paper said yesterday that we were at 83 officers, we're at 82. Six of those officers are at the airport, whereas in '93, '94, we didn't have any officers assigned to the airport. The airport had its own police department. The calls for service have tripled easily. What I ask of you is, before you make a decision on cutting a commander, a sergeant, three officers, whatever it may be, hop in a police car on a Friday, Saturday night, go on a ride-along, go in there at 4:00. See that there's 20, 25 calls pending. Go to the people's houses that have been waiting three or four hours for a police car to come there. It's not that we're sitting at the donut shop or anything like that. These officers haven't started service yet, and there's 18 to 20 calls pending. This is a nightly occurrence. And then when the bar is closed, stand by to stand by, as we say, because then the party really begins downtown, and we're out there fending for ourselves. I think it'd be a really big disservice to the city, to the police department, to all the citizens, the businesses, and the visitors of the city to start cutting cops, cutting firefighters. I agree that tourism is the cash cow for the city. Cutting money out of the Tourism Bureau isn't a great idea either. But when the crime rates continue to rise, people aren't gonna wanna come to this wonderful city. Thank you all for serving them in the council and serving the citizens of Palm Springs. I just really hope that you consider public safety first. Thank you.
And thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please give your name to the clerk, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Chris Kramer. I'm a resident, a 25-year employee of the Palm Springs Fire Department, and a member of the association. I, like Mike did, would like to thank Mayor and Councilman Mills for attending Chief Kearns' funeral and memorial service yesterday. It was a befitting of a member of our department for the last 30 years, and it was greatly appreciated by the members that were there. To the matters at hand and the serious matters that you have before you with the budget, we've been through this before. I've been here long enough to see enough of these happen. I've been to the Budget Task Force meetings, as two of the members of the council came from that task force. I see there's others in the audience. I've made statements there that I hoped enlightened certain people. Apparently now it's time to come to the council and enlighten people to some of the concerns that we've had over the years and the reasons things have been done the way they have. We have serious concerns with proposed cuts that are coming before the council and being talked about within our fire department. The gentleman from the Stroke Activity Center spoke of the paramedic service. That's a feature that we added several years ago to our department to enhance our service that we provide to the citizens. I think everyone would agree, it was a beneficial service. And I think a survey that the city did last year of citizens proved that out. It was a survey that was commissioned by the city. It's in contained in this report, and I'm sure all of you have read and been through this before. And I've tabbed all the areas in there that I thought pertained to the positive responses to not only the fire department, but the paramedic service in particular. Now, a lot of people have said that it's a duplication of a service that already exists. And I've come before different groups numerous times to explain why that was enacted, and I still feel there are people that don't fully understand that. The biggest concern was that the private ambulance provider could not meet the response time set forth by the county EMS service. The fire department stepped up to the plate and said, "We can do it. We can provide that service. We can attempt to provide a quicker response with a paramedic alongside the rest of us that are EMT-trained, slightly lower level than a paramedic." But we still have a number of paramedics within the department now that are able to respond alongside our existing fire personnel that are out on engines around the station at the five stations we have. That's a critical service we provide. It's the majority of our calls, that's true. Many people have seen the statistics, and statistics don't lie. We go on roughly 63, 6400 calls a year, it increases every year, and a majority of our calls are medical aides. We still have a fire protection problem in the city that we have to maintain. We need to maintain a safe number of personnel on a fire to extinguish that fire and treat the other incidents that happen throughout the year. And it's vital that the fire department not be reduced any more than we are at. And one of the things that we've been able to do with that paramedic service that I've told other people is, we started with a basic service and expanded it, no cost to the citizens. Thank you.
And thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. Good evening and welcome, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Christine Hammond, I'm a Palm Springs resident, and I'm here to talk about neighborhood involvement in the city. I have had the pleasure of working with neighborhood organizations in the city since I moved here, and currently am working with the, the city to identify some of the neighborhoods that have not been organized and help them organize themselves so that we can be active participants in city government as well as our elected officials. I'm not here representing any neighborhood tonight, I'm here as an individual and a resident of Palm Springs, but I just wanted you guys to know that as you begin to think about and talk about forming a subcommittee for working with neighborhoods in the city, that I want you to know that I'm excited to work with councilpeople and to have you involved in neighborhood issues. And want to thank you in advance for the discussion I know you're gonna have later in the meeting on neighborhood, on the neighborhood subcommittee. One of the things I just wanted to say about the importance of neighborhood organizations is that it opens the door for residents and city officials to communicate about some of the issues that are important to both city and residents. And we've, we've talked about budget cuts and some of the issues that come up around that, police and fire. One of the, the major things that neighborhoods are proponents of is neighborhood watch programs. And the more neighborhoods we organize, the more active watch programs we have, and we can work with our police department to help watch over some of the crime, the lesser crimes that, that they are now spending a lot of time being involved in. Some of, that is, I think, a major benefit. One of the other benefits is, is a matter of communication and making it easier for the city to communicate some of the issues that are coming up, some of the changes that are taking place, like in development in, in and around neighborhoods, so that we eliminate what happens when rumors begin to spread about development that gets people excited to the point of being combative almost. And what, what I really see as a benefit of this kind of organization is, is a collaborative relationship between neighborhoods and cities, an opportunity for the neighborhoods to do some very active planning with the cities so that we can work with the budget process and put items that need to be covered in neighborhoods into your budget, and whether that be this year's budget, next year's budget, or the budget after that. So, planning for neighborhoods, again, I'm looking forward to working with you guys on a subcommittee, and I thank you for your involvement in neighborhoods.
And thank you. Last call. If there's anyone who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. Then we'll close public comments. Council, comments, questions, reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I've got a comment and a question, I guess, on a memorandum we received dated April 22nd. A copy we received to Mr. Reddy from Mr. Alashire regarding taxi signs. And it, it states that, in my understanding, is that it is a way to circumvent the normal process that we have for amending our zoning ordinance. And I, for one, want to voice a strong objection to, to doing what this suggests. And it essentially says that we would, we'd create a amendment to the Business Regulations for Streets and Highways section of our, of our Muni code, and, which can be done fairly rapidly, fairly easily, versus going through the process of amending the zoning ordinance, which is a much slower process, takes more public input, more comment, review by, by, by Planning Commission. And not only that, we would have two conflicting ordinances on the books, which I don't think is the proper way to handle things. And I think there are a lot of items regarding this issue, and legal items, that we need to look at. And before staff start spending time on, on that process, I think if, if, if the council chooses to do it that way, then so be it. But I don't remember any vote, I don't remember any, 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 any direct direction from the council to pursue this process. And at least, we should have a comment and a, and an understanding of what the repercussions of doing this are. So I would, I would like to request a report and an explanation of what this memorandum is in reference to and where we are on it.
Ms. Fote?
I just wanted to, in light of what we're going to talk about, we got in our packet a letter. It's a very short letter, I'd like to read it, because I think that we need to acknowledge this company. This is from PacWest Land Care, Inc., which is our landscape management company, and it says, "On March 26th, the City of Palm Springs stated that they were facing a significant budget shortfall for the coming fiscal year, July 1st, 2004, asking for our support during these difficult times. The partnership the City of Palm Springs and PacWest has had for the past three years been a successful one, and look forward for many years to come. Because of our success in the past and the relationship we have grown to, PacWest Land Care will support and forego our cost of living increase for the upcoming fiscal year." And I was so impressed by the fact that somebody we are contracting with understands our budget problem and is willing to be a partner and not just willing to take the check from us, that I wanted to call attention to them and also ask that the rest of the companies that we contract with might wanna follow suit with PacWest. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, Ms. Jordan. Along with what, with what Ms. Ms. Fote mentioned, I think I recall in our packet as well, a memo from Mr. Alashire doing a modification along the same line that I, that I, for one, as Ms. Fote mentioned, do appreciate. So I'd like to thank him as well for that.
May I ask, Mr. Mayor? I think it, just going back to that taxi cab issue, I think it's, my understanding that's going to be on next week's agenda? Is that correct?
The ordinance, yes.
The ordinance. So, the discussion that Chris is asking that we have, I, he sort of summarized what my memorandum had done, and we've actually did march forward because our perception was that this issue had become contentious, and the association had been here a number of times, wanted to speed it forward, speed it up. So I did take the lead in trying to come up with a method of doing that, and we actually have prepared the ordinance, we've reviewed it with the taxi group, we've gotten comments, we have not incorporated all their comments. We were going to have it on the agenda for your next meeting. I don't think they're 100% happy with it, and the thinking was that at that point in time, there could be a discussion, and I, of course, would be happy to explain the difference between that approach and, and the zoning, get into the issues that you raised. But I just wanted to let you know that that subject, the ordinance itself, is planned to be brought forward at, on your next agenda.
But it has not gone before the Planning Commission.
It hasn't gone to the Planning Commission. We, we are not approaching it as a zoning amendment. We are not approaching it as a zoning amendment, as Chris pointed out. Now, as it being on a part of your agenda at that point in time, if the council was uncomfortable going forward with that ordinance and wanted it to go as a zoning measure back to the Planning Commission, you would not have to adopt that ordinance amendment. You could send it that direction. So, I believe that that agenda item would be a way of dealing with the issues that you're talking about, but I, in light of your comment, didn't want you to be surprised that right now, staff is putting it on next week's agenda.
Yes, I have a request from staff. On the Palm Springs Classic, if they could bring, give us, give me a report on the status of the land that was set aside for the fire station, and also the possible relocation of the fire station that's on Golf Club Drive in Bolero. Thank you.
On the 7th, I attended a reception for the AIDS Assistance Program. You were there too, weren't you?
I gave a presentation.
Well, yeah, that was for the Evening Under the Stars. That's the next night. And you did give a presentation. You did a great job. And that was at the O'Donnell Golf Course. And to their board, I'd just like to say it was truly an exceptional evening, and especially to Marc Anton and Gary Jordan, they just did an exceptional job. On Monday evening, I attended the African-American Chamber of Commerce meeting at Ramada at Leon's, and the group is certainly growing and certainly was some of the best. And I spoke at Sunup Rotary Mesquite Country Club, and, boy, they asked a lot of questions. But it was good for me. I also attended a presentation over at Desert Sunshine Preschool, and they received a check from the wastewater treatment plant for their playground equipment. And as you heard earlier, Councilmember, Mayor Potem, Chris Mills, and I attended the funeral services for Paul Kern. Actually, his retirement dinner was planned for this Friday evening, and he passed shortly before that. But to his family, we just want to say thank you for sharing him with us for the number of years, 34 years, here in the city of Palm Springs, and you are in our thoughts and prayers. And last evening, along with the tribal chairman, Richard Milanovich, we did a special welcome to Meeting Planners Conference held at the Spa Hotel. And all of us have been involved with interviews for boards and commissions this week, which will be ongoing because we had to reschedule quite a few of hours because of the funeral. So, those of you who have interviews, we look forward to meeting with you in the next week. And just as a reminder, earthquake preparedness, what to do before the big one hits, earthquake forum at City Hall on Monday, May 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., sponsored by the Palm Springs Public Library and developed by the Palm Springs Fire Department. So, please remember, it will be held in the council chamber. And it will be televised as well, yes. City manager.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have a request, if there's support for an added starter. This is regarding the discussion of the proposed budget amendment between the governor and the California League of Cities. It has arisen subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the request will be if they want a letter of support sent to the league at their meeting tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning, whether the city council would support that proposed agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to put that on the agenda.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
And second by Mr. Boneye. All in favor, I'd be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
Thank you. Second of all, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mills had made a request regarding the Chino Cone specific plan. In speaking with our planning director, Mr. Evans, he's prepared to give a very brief update of the process, Mr. Mills, if you like, or if you prefer it in writing, your choice, sir.
Just based on time, the writing would be fine.
Great. Thank you. We'll have that for you in your packet.
Great.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we're prepared to move into the agenda items.
Let's move into our first agenda item, fiscal year 2004-05, preliminary budget.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, but we have a presentation this evening from the Budget Task Force that city council appointed. They were appointed over approximately almost a year ago and did some preliminary work with a preliminary report. They were instructed to get back together with regard to this current budget. They have done so and have a report to present this evening, and we would ask that, we would allow them to go first, and then after that, we have a presentation on our budget and also additional information with regard to the governor's revised budget that just came out yesterday, and that has impacts as well. And if I could, at this moment, ask Mr. John Stiles, the chairman of the Budget Task Force, to come forward and give their presentation. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. First, I would like to just ask the members of our Budget Task Force to stand. Two of them could not attend tonight, but if the others would stand. Just so you know, we've got you outnumbered tonight. You've received our initial package here this evening, the three-page, and we'll be fairly brief. But I think the point of it is, is that as the Budget Task Force began its work and evaluated what had been done in the past, there were a number of blue ribbon committees, budget committees, finance committees, all who made reports and all, and whose reports all ended up on the shelf. Unfortunately, if those had been paid attention to, we might not be in the situation we're in today. So, it's, what we have is that, first, our recommendation is to go back and look at the report that we submitted in October of 2003, and I think everybody has been provided a copy of that report. I think that's really the, where the meat of the program is. Tonight, we're very briefly going to go over three areas, employee benefits, contract services, and revenue enhancement. And I would like to ask Sharon Locke to come up and join us, and Sharon and Tom Mulhall are going to talk about two of their areas, and then I'll conclude with the revenue enhancement.
Good evening. I'll be brief. What were fringe benefits? And currently, what we're paying, in addition to salary, to the general and general employees and MAPS group, is between 25% and 40% of their salaries and benefits. For fire and police, it's around 69% of their salary that we're paying in benefits. So, we took the two largest items, which we believe were health insurance and pension cost, and we did an analysis in those areas. What we're paying for health benefits right now is about $3.8 million, which is a significant amount of money. When we began to analyze the insurance policies across the year, across all the units, we found out that we have a variety of plans and policies. And one of the first things we thought is, insurance benefits should probably be consistent across all units. That will give you more leverage when you go out to market to get rates. The second thing that we determined was that we have an unequal benefit package whereby in the same insurance program, you can have a single person that we're paying $300 a month for, and we have a family that we're paying $1,008 a month for, which says right there, we don't have a true cafeteria plan, and we do not have equal pay for equal work. So, that's something that we thought should be looked at closer. And eliminating the marital status, or the single, single plus one from family, is a direction that many of the other cities are going. There's one rate that everybody gets. They can look at dental, they can look at vision and health benefits, and some of them include disability. And that individual then can craft his benefit amount for his own situation, which may not be the same for every person. So, we said that, we looked at it as much as we could with the data, the preliminary data that we had, and we said, well, depending on how you revamp health benefits, you could have a savings of $250,000 to $750,000 a year, which is fairly significant. The employee health benefits took us right into the retiree medical benefits, which we found the same inconsistency and the same single, single plus one in families. So, that needs to be revamped, but mostly what we found is we need to cap those medical benefits at some point, possibly at the '03-'04 level. Right now, it's not a significant budget item, as we're only paying about $460,000, but the problem is, with the age of our staff and rising benefits, we could escalate between $2 million in the next five years and $7 million in 10 years. That's going to take some significant tax increases to keep up with those costs. Finally, we looked at the PERS program, which is really the pension benefits for the employees. Now, what the city is doing, we are paying 100% of those benefits, even though the, I think, the state guidelines are 8% for non-safety and 9% for safety personnel, that they should be contributing to their pension program. The current cost of PERS to the city is right at $4 million. It's 3.987. Next year, the costs are going to be 7.5. Again, that's a significant increase. We're saying that if employees would participate in their own pension programs, even at a mere 2%, we could save the city $560,000. And if it was at the 4% level, which is still half of what their part would be, would be over $1 million a year. We look, we think that probably with these recommendations, that we need, we need to revamp pensions and health because they're going to keep increasing. They're not going to go down, they're not going to go away. We need to think outside the box and revamp some of these items. And there's, on your second page, is just a very brief synopsis of what is in the Blue Book, which I tried to condense down because it got to be three and four pages on health benefits. So, you can look at the kind of abridged version, and then go back to the blue section if you want to look at it by unit. It's by unit, by employee, based, again, on the numbers that we got about a year ago. So, thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions?
Can you tell me what the difference is, why, why we are paying 25, maybe you don't know why, but I'm trying to figure out what the difference is in the 25% to 40% benefits for employees, where it's 69% benefits in police and fire?
Police and fire, there's 3% at 50, and it's around the PERS calculation mostly. And Mr. Canar's not here, but I'm sure he would substantiate that. Oh, there it was. Is that right?
This is me. Yes, mostly true. Mostly PERS.
Some of the police and fire, their PERS contributions are over $30,000 per year. So, that's partially why it's so high, because of the age of the employees.
So, what are, what is your suggestion? I mean, you're pointing, you've pointed out these facts, which are very distressing, but they've been distressing for a while. And so, what is your suggestion to do?
Well, we talked about that, I guess, at length in many of our subcommittee meetings. I think there should be probably a much more in-depth study at what we can do across the units to begin to bring those units under the same umbrella for health cost. I was lucky to have Truman Gates on the benefits, who is CEO at Tenet. And what we were discussing is, if you have more leverage, if you have more people in the same plans in order to lower the rates. The other thing is, in some of the units, I mean, there might be five different choices. We need to limit the choices, and we need to have all employees under that same umbrella. And there needs to be some type of employee participation in those costs. It's almost unheard of today to have some units that have 100% of these benefits paid. I believe in the new contracts, the employees are picking up $10 or $20 of it. And the other thing that we truly believe in is that we have to have a cafeteria, a true cafeteria plan that says, all right, you get $800. Now, how do you want to spend that $800? Do you want to spend it on vision? Do you want to spend it on more health insurance? Do you want to spend it on dental? So that every individual can then develop their own programs. And that will be a savings in and of itself. But it will also create equal pay. It's not really taking anything away. It's creating equal pay for equal jobs, which we don't have at the moment.
That was really interesting, what you said, because I'd never looked at it that way, whereas if somebody's making $50,000 over here and it's a single person, they're not getting as much in benefits as the person making $50,000 over here who has a family. So, it really is a pay discrepancy also.
Well, that's right. Well, and that's the big thing. People forget, at one time, benefits weren't that large, even in the private sector, that it wasn't a concern. But what's happened over the years with pension cost and health cost is that it's become a significant part of your pay, and that's why you have to equalize that pay.
Thank you.
Yes, Sharon, you were saying that we have greater leverage in terms of getting a better benefit package by grouping everyone together. Would you see a benefit, then, perhaps, if we also linked with other cities?
Probably, according to, I'm sorry, he couldn't be here this evening, but in our numerous conversations, that's true, linking with other cities and maybe going to a different type of plan altogether. Because, again, the larger your base and volume, the better rates that you can derive. And, again, limiting the packages as well, I think that's an extremely important component of this.
Are there any other questions? Tom, you continue.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. My name's Tom Mulhall. On my committee was also Steve Nichols, who's here tonight. And the area which we were charged with was to investigate with the fire department and also the city attorney's department. I met with Mr. Alashire last year, and during the conversations which we had already, we've had significant savings coming from Mr. Alashire's department, which was greatly appreciated by the city, I'm sure. And then tonight, I'm going to be discussing the fire department. Now, the fire department's a fairly interesting subject because it affects every single, the city attorney, of course, affects every single citizen, but the fire department can directly affect every single citizen in the town. And the public must be involved in determining what is that adequate level of fire protection. They must have a clear understanding of what the impact of adequate or inadequate service for their safety, along with the cost of providing or not providing those services. The fire department themselves put in a report back in 2002 that we, as a city, must assure an adequate level of fire protection, but also at a cost the city can provide. And that's the key issue here, is what cost can the city provide? What do the citizens want to pay for their police and fire protection? Now, right now, the fire department costs have risen from about $4.75 million in the fiscal 97-98 year to $7.46 million in the fiscal '03-'04 year. The present cost per citizen in town is approximately, for the fire department, $171 per person. One significant factor, which is reflected in increased cost during this period, is the addition of the merge, of the medical aid, which the EMS services, which we have, which was phased in during those years. Also, the pay costs were driven quite higher by the dramatic increases in the PERS contributions. The department presently, right now, has 59 reported positions, 12 of which are at a rank of captain or higher. The average pay is $151,000 for those positions. The other 47,000, the other 47 positions are an average pay level of about $74,000, and pay is defined as salary plus the PERS contribution. The total cost for the fire department- The total cost for the Fire Department service, about seventy-two percent were for the EMS service. EMS costs have increased dramatically over time. Right now, they've increased almost forty percent in the last five years, where the cost for the other services have only increased by about six-point-five percent. The way we, again, this directly impacts us, is when we listen to the gentleman from the Stroke Center. Tonight, you can decide what you want to do about the paramedic situation, and for instance, if you decided that that's an area where you do indeed want to cut back services, that also can drastically injure people in the city of Palm Springs by those cutbacks in services. So, it's not an easy issue, which has to be decided. Due to the financial crisis which we're facing in Sacramento, it does not appear that this is going to be easing up in the near future. So, right now, maybe it's the time where we start to do some major structural changes on how we do take care of our police and fire protection. Now, the two ways of doing it is either by increasing revenue, which basically means increased taxes, or by cost-cutting. For instance, with the fire protection, the citizens, we have to determine what they're willing to pay for that type of fire protection. Right now, it's a hundred-and-seventy-one dollars per person in town. Are the citizens willing to pay maybe two-hundred dollars per person, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per person, to maintain a very good level of, level of protection? If the citizens are indeed willing to pay that type of money, and that can be instituted either through the nine-one-one phone tax, real estate parcel tax, increase in utilities tax, increase in sales tax, well, then, we pretty much solve the problem, because we will be setting aside the funds in the future, a way to pretend, to, to pay for this increase, or a way to pay for the present level of fire protection, which we have. Now, the citizens may decide that they do not want to have their taxes increased to pay for this level of protection, and that's where we then have to go to the cost-cutting. The level for the cost-cutting, for instance, it was reported in the newspaper, that they're talking about re, reducing the Fire Department by six firefighters, and by one fire marshal. At present, we do have twelve positions, which are the rank of captain or higher, possibly by flattening out management through attrition, flattening out management by having more people at the higher levels be replaced, and less people at the first responder levels be replaced, that might be the area to go, where we still maintain the very good level of first responders to take care of crisis situations. Next major area is to pursue consolidating the fire and police dispatch with more than one cities. This area has been discussed numerous times, the police chief has, definitely is behind investigating for the cost savings. There could, we have all the cities down here, from the Cove Cities to here, if we can consolidate all the nine-one-one, instead of every single city having their own nine-one-one, we probably could definitely get economies of scale by doing that. Another area is to lobby to allow ambulance transport by the Fire Department. Right now, it is illegal in the county for your Fire Department to transport. However, cities that were grandfathered in before the law was passed, such as Cathedral City, are allowed to transport patients to the hospitals, they get reimbursed by insurance companies, they get reimbursed by Medicare. That is an area where many Fire Departments across the country do raise revenue. If we can lobby to get that law passed, or law changed in Riverside County, then indeed, we'd have to retrofit our trucks, but that could be a revenue enhancement area for the future, and to, again, maintain the service which we presently have. The final area is for you to think about outsourcing the Fire Department. Other communities here have contracted with Riverside County, possibly the whole process of RFP, a request for proposal, where you have an outside agency, such as the county, determining what they would charge the city of Palm Springs for fire protection, and the city of Palm Springs then determining, what exactly do we want to provide for our citizens? You can then, with the request for proposal, really determine, are there areas where we could save money, because you now have competition for the business? And hopefully, that would drive our Fire Department to think of more creative ways for saving money or enhancing services, and also the county to come up with ideas for us to either save money or enhance services. Final areas is we can look for other big-picture areas for fire safety, such as requiring all new structures to have sprinklers in, so that when tenants aren't home, you can get the fire suppression right away, and also having central station, where every single home, where you can phase in, where every single home has to have a central station alarm for fire protection. So, again, when people are not at home, if there's fires there, there can be notification right away to the Fire Departments before a fire gets out of hand.
Counsel, are there questions? Mr. McCullough.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions that maybe the Fire Chief would answer. Is this the appropriate time to, to bring them up, or should we wait till his presentation's over?
We should probably, if they're directly for the Fire Chief, we should.
Well, they relate to issues that are part of the, of the points of this discussion.
Would you prefer it now?
I think now would be better. Okay, and Chief Free?
Well, first, I want to thank the members of the task force for, not only all the hours that they put in before to prepare this report, but also agreeing to reconvene and, and continue to do their work for the city. We all appreciate that very much, we know the sacrifices that you're making. Chief, the, the transport of ambulance by the Fire Department, has that been studied by the city? My recollection was that there was an issue about whether or not the fees would, would offset the cost, and also, there could be a collection issues with respect to, how do you get the money for the ambulance transport?
First off, there's state law that precludes us from transporting patients, as Mr. Mulhall indicated, that certain cities, jurisdictions that had been grandfathered in were allowed to continue. Those that were not, which were in that case, we were prohibited from being in the business of transporting patients. We, about four, maybe five years ago, we worked with Senator Batten to sponsor some legislation to make a change in that, it was called the Ortega Bill. It was defeated. So, we have been very active over the last few years in trying to make a change statewide to allow municipalities the opportunity to transport patients. And with that, make the collections, and the collections on transport are not, not a difficult issue, however, it's a constantly changing formula because of federal laws that affect patient transport reimbursements.
Okay, thank you. And then Blake Getz and I attended the SEVAC Public Safety Meeting this weekend, and it was discussed about the fact that there's going to be some changes to our radio dispatching rules. They, currently, all the cities except for the fire is on a trunk eight-hundred megahertz system, which is going to be switched to a seven-hundred megahertz system in maybe five years. So, we'll be, we'll be required to get all new equipment in the city for our radio dispatching, because Motorola is no longer going to support the equipment that exists, and also, the band won't be available, likely. And it, is that a time where we could possibly consider consolidation of police and fire dispatch, in that's, in that scenario of, of changing equipment with, with the rest of the Coachella Valley?
It certainly would be an opportunity to review the options that we would have, however, Fire Departments in Riverside County do not operate on eight-hundred megahertz. We do have eight-hundred megahertz equipment in our units, but for mutual aid purposes, we have a standard system by which we all can communicate throughout the state on fires. It is not imperative that police and fire be able to talk to each other directly. That's why we have dispatch centers, command centers and such. Oftentimes, the emergency does not dictate that we would want to, to be talking directly in the field to each other, but through a command center. So, but to answer your question directly, there is an eight-hundred megahertz push out there, there are issues related to obsolescence with our existing eight-hundred megahertz system in the city, and the, the Fire Department does not operate our normal operations on those systems. And we have obtained eighty-thousand dollars from the Agua Cayante Band to Quee Indians to do some minor upgrades and redesign of our existing Fire Department system to enhance our capability.
Maybe I'd like just to see that, as we go forward with the SEVAC Public Safety Committee, that when we talk about, they were looking at countywide conformity with the seven-hundred megahertz system, which will be new, and that we maybe look at that point and discuss the consolidation issue. The problem for, and Counsel probably isn't aware of this, is the eight, is the seven-hundred megahertz system may not be available for three to five years, and our eight-hundred megahertz system may be obsolete before that time. So, we may be doing this twice, change over in our radios. And one other, but that, we're a little off point here. One other, one other question was, could you please refer to the, how are, how are, our city is rated for fire protection by the insurance companies, and if we have a decrease in the level of service we provide, how that may impact the, our homeowners' insurance and our business insurance?
Yes. Fire Departments are rated by the Insurance Service Office, so-called ISO. They come into a jurisdiction about every ten years, and they do a, a full-blown evaluation of our services. They look at the water system that's provided in the community, the, the structures that are in the community, the population, the type of structures, the height of the structures, and certainly the capability of the Fire Department to deliver services, both in apparatus, they look at the apparatus. Our communication system is a very key element, redundancy of communication systems is one area that they look at. And the biggest area that we're deficient is in staffing. Because of our staffing, we, we are, it's difficult for us to maintain the rating that we have presently, which is a class three. We did go ten years ago from a class four, which is not as good, to a class three, which is better. We would have to add significant numbers of personnel to go from a class three to a class two, being class two is better. The impact to the community is, is that the insurance brokers write their policy based upon the ISO grading of that community, predominantly on commercial. That's where the major effect has been, is, is in the commercial insurance rates. And it has been recorded, and I don't know that it's factual, but, so I am a little hesitant to state it, but it's been stated before that the impact to the insurance premiums annually for the commercial insurance is in the neighborhood of eight-hundred to a million dollar, eight-hundred-thousand to a million dollars in premium for every grade increase, or decrease, actually.
For, for Palm Springs?
That's correct.
So, that would be, the businesses would be paying?
They'd be paying less for every grade improvement.
Or more for every?
Or for more for every deterrent, yes.
Now, if one of the stations was closed, and there was a rotating, well, that's closed station, would that drop us to, out of class three?
It possibly could, I don't know. And the dynamics of that, to answer your question, are, I would have to ask you, is the assumption that closing a station, would that also mean reducing staffing? And if that's the question you're asking, I would emphatically say yes, it would be detrimental to our rating.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if I could also, Barry, for one second, the one thing I do want to point out is our costs are very in line with the different communities here in the valley. The Cove Cities per capita is a hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, we're a hundred-and-seventy-one dollars, so we are nowhere at all out of line with what the other communities are paying. The other thing is, we already are low on staffing, we have two-man trucks, the Cove Communities have three-man trucks, the Cove Communities are already discussing reducing their trucks from a three-man to a two-man. The problems which you have when you have a two-man truck is you have much higher incidence of chances for injury, much higher incidences of chance for, I'm sorry, just injury, fighting the fire, not including the safety issue of when somebody goes into the fire. So, you're dealing where there may be potential liabilities for cutting back that staffing, is that correct?
It's correct.
So, it's not just a, an issue of reducing the staff saves money, because the long-term, it could actually cost us money. That's why you have to think of the two ways, either revenue enhancement to solve the problem for the future, or look at what can happen with the cost-cuttings in the Fire Department.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mayor. Chief, on the ISO rating, is our fire sprinkler ordinance come into play in how they rate commercial?
It's a consideration, yes.
Is it as big a consideration as, as Manning, say?
No. No, they are very emphatic that Manning is, is a major issue with them. I might add also, and I kind of glossed over it, that, that ISO rated us approximately ten years ago, and that they come back and rate us approximately every ten years. We've already been noticed that they will be back here in the fall of the year to re-rate us.
And, right, so, so, right, right now, our, and you're saying that ISO are really more on commercial rates than residential rates?
Yes.
Currently, our fire sprinkler ordinance is structures thirty-five-hundred, new structures, thirty-five-hundred and above, I think that's what it is, and?
All structures.
Right.
All structures.
All structures, thirty-five-hundred and above, not, not single-family, though?
Yes.
It is?
All structures, all structures.
Irregardless of response time?
Yes.
Okay, then, then, if that were reduced, does that affect, that, that square footage number was reduced, do you think that would, would be a factor?
A consideration or a factor? I would have to go back and, I, I can't answer your question.
Okay.
I have to go back and review it.
Thank you.
The, the ISO criteria is very involved.
I can imagine.
Ms. Foul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the newspaper, it said that the average, the average firefighter made forty-eight-thousand dollars a year, I believe what was in, and I always believe.
That's including PERS. We have, we have the chart in the Blue Book for every person's salary, that is salary plus PERS, because you have to play the PERS.
So, the average salary, then, you think, is, is seventy-four-thousand of the?
Seventy-three-thousand, correct, including PERS.
Wow, I'm sorry, I didn't learn how to be a firefighter. One of the articles that I, that I read in the packet that we were given was an interesting article, which I, I was wondering if you looked into, is one of the cities that are facing the same kind of, of, you know, terrible budget cuts that we're looking at, contracted with the ambulance service for a shorter response time, and they eliminated their paramedic program. And contracted directly with the existing ambulance service to make sure that they had a shorter response time. I know, I think now, what is it, a ten, ten-minute response time?
Right, if I remember, the Fire Department's five minutes, Barry, and ambulance is ten?
By the county contract, they are to be on scene with ni, within nine minutes and fifty-nine seconds, and they do a fairly good job at that. There are instances where they exceed that by a considerable amount of time, based on availability of ambulances.
Right.
And, and the Fire Department's average response time is five minutes. Your, your question about subcontracting or contracting for a higher service level, that is certainly an issue that could be discussed with the ambulance company. I'm not certain that they would be, I, I don't know what the cost of that would be, and I don't know what their interest level would be, because of their?
I just thought it was interesting, because if we, if we did have to eliminate our paramedic program, and that's what this other, this other city that, that was in our packet was, was doing, was eliminating their paramedic program, but they recognize the need for being able to, to have people, you know, on scene right away, and so they contracted at a higher level with the existing, and I, I think it would be worth taking a look at what some, how something like that could possibly save us some money, if, if that's what we had to end up doing in, in the long run.
My only concern, and I, I believe that's what you're implying here, too, is that that unit would have to be dedicated to our city for that, whatever the price would be, is that unit could not leave Palm Springs. Is that what you're implying?
I, I don't know how that would happen, I, I don't know if you, I don't know where they're based now, so that, that's why I'm asking the question, I have no idea.
They rove around.
Right.
Based upon demand level. So, in order to?
Is it just one fi, one ambulance in the, how many units do they have?
They're presently, at some times, there's as many as thirteen in the Coachella Valley, but based upon demand, they may be anywhere.
So, then?
There may, there may not be any in Western Coachella Valley at any given time.
Well, then, how do they maintain a ten-minute response?
It's an average.
Right, with the request for proposal? Right, with the request for proposal...
Go ahead.
Okay, with the request for proposal, you have to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. If we already have the dedicated paramedic vehicle here, and they don't, you're not comparing apples to apples. You have to make sure that they are doing the exact same thing as our fire department is doing, before you're truly able to compare are there going to be cost savings or not?
Well, they'll be able to transport, and we can't, I mean, which I think is so ridiculous, but, but we can't.
Right, which is what Senator Batson was trying to help.
Chief, didn't we at one time have a certain response time and a penalty associated with it, if they didn't make it there in time? That it, within a certain range, and they had to, what happened with that?
I'll give you the history very briefly, and then the current situation. Under the master ambulance contract with, that Riverside County has had in place with AMR ambulance, there was a penalty fee for every minute over the 10 minutes, or nine minutes and 59 seconds. And it started out at about $20 for the first minute, and then ratcheted up $40 and progressed, and I think when it got to about 15 minutes total time, in other words, five minutes over the contract amount, then it jumped to about $100 for that penalty. And I don't want to bore you with the whole process, but it capped out at total 20-minute response time, at a fee, a penalty fee of $200, and it capped at that. So essentially, the contractor, the ambulance, could be there at 25 minutes, and they're still going to get the same $200 penalty fee. So that's the old ambulance contract. The new ambulance contract that went into effect on April the 1st removed the cap and redesigned the penalty criteria. It's still, it starts after the 10 minutes, or nine minutes and 59 seconds, but it's a little bit more stringent, and it doesn't cap off as the old contract did. Now, that, there is that penalty. The process by which that penalty is then disseminated is by jurisdiction, they, by municipality, they determined the percentage of service calls in that area that were beyond the contract amount, and the associated penalty fees. And those monies were then annually given to the city, whereby the city was, through an agreement we had with the county, we could then use the money to enhance our ALS, or actually our EMS, emergency medical services, with that penalty money. In other words, it goes back into the system, if you will. So our revenue stream from those penalties in Palm Springs have ranged somewhere between $12,000 and $20,000 a year, which we then have plowed back into enhancing our EMS services in Palm Springs.
And that's understanding that they cap out at a certain point.
That's correct. That's correct.
I have a question to the task force, because in both police and fire, there's several references to the, what I think some may consider the disparity between supervisors and the number of people. Now, coming from the world of education, the higher the risk, the greater the ratio. I mean, so when you're dealing with younger children, you have to have more people there. So I'm not sure if there is a ratio mandate for high-risk jobs, like police and fire, when we look at supervision, because I think we're just kind of saying that you don't need that many supervisors. But considering how high-risk it is, so I'm just interested in what your findings were.
It's definitely true, the higher the risk, and definitely those are probably the two highest-risk areas here, you definitely need more supervisors. But at the same time, you have to look at the reality of how much money do we have? And that's the key. And we're not recommending, we're looking at, can you flatten it out? You may find in your investigation that you really cannot cut the fire department, you cannot cut the police department, and you have to convince the citizens they have to take a tax. They have to pay more for a parcel tax, they have to increase the utilities tax. The reality is, is we only have so much money. We either increase it or decrease it, and if we are at risk for cutting a headcount, where do you go? You go for the higher dollar figures to maintain the headcount? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think that, there's always a question of management structures. I think the goal, and I'm never quite sure what our goal is when we talk about public safety, but it should be, how many police officers have we got on the street? Not how many managers are sitting up somewhere managing and having available firefighters. And when we look at firefighters, and you look at the number that make more than $100,000, those, many of those are firefighting personnel. But do you need to be that expensive for firefighting personnel? I don't know the answer to that question, but those are management decisions I think the council's going to have to look at.
Now, if I understand, that the battalion commanders and down are all still first responders who do go to the fires, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So that's, we actually, so it's only really yourself, plus the assistant fire chief and the fire marshal, who may not accept go to a situation, except again, when there's a situation that definitely calls for it. And even then, you yourself would be a first responder.
That's correct.
So that's where they're a little bit different, I think, than the police department.
I don't know that we're different in that perspective, and I'd have to defer to the police chief on that.
Oh, okay.
Looks to me like he has a gun, so I'm a little...
Okay. The last, the last area that the budget task force looked at was revenue enhancement. And I would tell you that I think generally, the budget task force felt this was a Band-Aid. Because what this does is kind of like a tourniquet, it stems the flow of blood, but it doesn't solve the basic problem. You've got to fix the wound, and we're bleeding. But in that, within that discussion, the budget task force felt that admission tax was similar to the transit occupancy tax. It impacted a lot of people, let visitors share in the expense of our city. The other, the other ballot initiative that they, that we're pretty supportive of was the public safety tax, the public safety parcel tax. It does two things. The citizens can make a decision on the level of service, and it takes a major portion of public safety out of the general budget and funds it from a separate source. So it would, it would be a relief from a deficit standpoint. Two other issues that would just raise, in the report, we raised the question about leisure services. I know last year, there was discussion on raising planning department fees to get it up, so the department was paying for itself by the people using the service, excuse me. The same philosophy ought to apply in the leisure services department. Are those programs self-supporting? And I don't know the answer to that, but that's one of those. The other, the other thing I would bring up on page SV-12 of the report, we make one referral to the wastewater treatment plant. If that plant were to be sold, and there was funds, we don't consider that revenue enhancement, that money should be restricted for specific uses and not used to plug holes. I think in summary, that's the report. It really hasn't changed a lot. In the areas of police and fire, I think you have, you have some choices. It stays like it is. You can put both police and fire, which services out to bid with the county. The budget task force was in favor of this, not because they're recommending a change at this point, but we've talked about that. That's an issue that always kind of hangs out there, and is it cost-effective? And there's only one way to do that, and that's to bid it. And the third way is to go to the citizens. There was reference made earlier about the study that the city did, the survey that the city did of the citizens on various services. The only lacking part of that study was the fact they didn't ask if they'd be willing to pay for it. And if you ask somebody if you'd like a new car, they'd always say yes. But if you say, do you want to pay for it, then you have another decision. So I don't think that survey really gave you a good indication of what's there. I think the key issues have to be, you have to deal with employee benefits. I think that has to come from a change with the unions. I think that has to be, in terms of healthcare, you probably maintain the same levels of service and start to change what's underneath it. I don't, I don't think you want to take it away, I don't think you can, but I think you could change it to make it cost-effective. I think you look at contract services, police-fire are things that need to be looked at. Maybe there's a better way to run the departments, maybe management has to get more creative. I think that the whole answer to this question, though, is with you five council members. You're going to have to have the political will, the political guts, to stand up to people if you're going to start to make changes, and once you start down that road, you don't cave in. There's 45,000 people in this town that you represent, and that's the benefit you're working for. And I think that, that's really the key issue. And the budget task force is prepared to continue to work and advise the council, but only if there's the political leadership to take us down the road where we're going to see real changes made. Because if we are just going to put Band-Aids on the problem, there's no sense to have a budget task force. And that concludes my, our report, unless you have questions.
Mr. Mayor. John, I know you don't want to do this, but out of the three, employee benefits, contract services, and revenue enhancement, I think I know the answer. If you had to prioritize the importance, is it just how you have them here on the sheet?
I think employee benefits are just key. I don't, I don't know that, I can give you a hard and fast answer, because employee benefits are key, and you're not going to change those overnight. But contract services you can look at, revenue enhancement, you might start for immediacy, you might start at the bottom and work up, and work with revenue enhancement, contract services, and then employee benefits. But I think you're going to have to direct staff to begin to look at these employee benefit issues, come back and have an open discussion with it, let everybody know what's going on, so that you can move forward in that area. It may be that the new people coming to work here work under a different plan than the existing employees. I'm not sure what all the answers are, but, so I give you two different answers on that.
Because as I listened to the presentation this evening, we've got really a couple things unfolding. The immediate need of, as we get into David's presentation of discussing further some of the topics we discussed here, and other impacts, but in my mind, regardless of what we do tonight in giving direction to the city manager, everything that we do is a Band-Aid. And during Ms. Locke's presentation, it was pretty clear, these costs cannot go unabated. And if they do, three and four years, we'll be, we'll be dealing with even, won't matter what we do before we get to June 30th, it will continue to roll. There's been studies done on it, municipalities are looking at it. So I would hope that this council, after we do get through the immediate budget cuts or the budget issues, that we direct the budget task force to really take a close and hard look at the benefits. And it's not easy to do, but for the long-term financial viability of the city, we are going to have to do it. And I really appreciate the entire task force spending the time and bringing these issues to our attention. Neither is easy, the short-term, just fixed, to make the numbers balance is not easy, nor is the long-term solution. So I applaud your efforts, thank you.
Yes, I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the budget task force, and you've presented, I think, some major challenges to look at a two-tier system. And when you look at market demands for quality employees and attracting good people, you know, and the benefits, and how do we do all of those things in this market? I guess the thing that concerns me is that, not only being here for as long as I have, but watching and working with other cities who don't do that, they pay for the mistakes of people who aren't competent. So you're absolutely right when you say that it is a major challenge trying to balance all of those things. But I have one other question, well, a question. I wasn't clear on what you were saying about the wastewater treatment plant.
If you sell it, don't waste the money.
I was pretty clear.
Yeah, but you said something about using it to fill holes. That's not clear. What does that mean?
Well, it, the point of it was, if you get X million dollars, you don't use it, $100,000 here and $100,000 there to fill up short-term budget goals, you use it for major projects in the city.
Do you have any recommendations?
Not at this point. I mean, I don't know what we're talking about, very honestly. I mean, you're going to get $50 million, $5 million, what's the money? And I don't want to get into that, because you're probably in negotiations.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one comment? I think you hit the key, too, when you talk about the police and fire, is don't trade away for incompetence. We have an excellent police department, I know Gary very well, I also know Barry very well, excellent fire department. I do believe we do need the request for proposal, just so we can see what other people suggest that we can do to better the city, and what costs they come in. But you're going to be coming in, if we use the county, for instance, with people who don't live here, who probably don't care as much about our community, who have not been here 10, 20, 30 years, who have not had investment in knowing who the bad guys are, where the fire problems are, for brand-new people. And you would be trading people who are inexperienced in our town for the people who are extremely competent in our town. So you do have to keep that in mind.
Okay. Well, that's an editorial comment, and I think really what we're doing is recommending that you do this. There's a lot of other issues involved in it, we'll acknowledge it, but I think that's part of the hard choices that the council gets to look at.
Thank you very much.
The issue, the overriding issue for us this evening is what we have is a 4.5 million dollar deficit. And that was a 4.5 million dollar deficit until the governor came out with his May budget revision, which adds an additional $320,000 onto that deficit. So we're at about 4.8. I would just note that last year we had a deficit as well, we cut out roughly 16 positions. This year, we are faced again with a deficit, not the least of which is because of the VLF issue and the other sales and property tax issues from the state, which is going to amount to about a million dollars less that we have to deal with. I would also just note that Councilman McCullough had asked me this week to, to bring to you a budget alternative that did not have any safety cuts, fire and police. Of the 4.5 million dollar deficit reduction plan that we have, about 1.2 million of that was in police and fire cuts. So we have in here also an alternative without any safety cuts, and that would be for your consideration as well. And finally, next week, I'm sorry, two weeks from now, the next study session, we had talked earlier about the possibility of if we do not want to lower the level of service, that the citizens may wish to choose to pay higher levels of revenue generators taxes, and we went through the list of what those could be. We are having some survey research done, a poll, and those results will be done for the next study session. The person who is conducting that survey research will be here to discuss the findings. So that will give council more information, and perhaps at that point, we'll be in a better position to decide if in fact there's any revenue enhancements the council would want to consider at that time. So this evening, we'd like to focus on, on the draft, draft budget, and at the next meeting, we will come back with any guidance you have given us for changes, and we will also have a discussion of potential revenue generators and tax increases at that time. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Canar, and he will walk us through his presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. You have before you the preliminary budget for fiscal year 04-05, and we have some discussion, very briefly, about fiscal year 03-04, the current year that we're in. On the page one, you have a summary, and I think you've seen this before, but just to maybe reprise this information, the, the major points that are in the budget, continued high level of building activity will likely produce an operating fund surplus in the current fiscal year of about $465,000. Our original projection, when you adopted, or the council adopted, the current-year budget was a million-dollar deficit. The mid-year projection that I gave you, I think it was January 14th, was a $215,000 deficit. So we've made some significant improvements there, virtually all because of building and planning-related fees, just a phenomenal amount of building going on in the city right now. A status quo budget for fiscal year 04-05, which means no new revenue sources, no expenditure cuts, and more or less the same staffing levels and same expenditure levels, would produce a deficit of about 4.5 million dollars. As the city manager said just this morning, we got some additional information from the governor and from the League of California Cities, and I'll go through that in some detail later. But basically, that will add about $320,000 to that deficit. So we're at about 4.8 million dollars. That would, if we adopted the budget it is, would reduce the operating fund reserves, the actual cash reserves that we would have in, in those funds, in the general fund and the community promotion fund, to about 3.5 million dollars. It says 3.8 million there, less the 300,000 dollars. The current-year budget, or the budget proposed before you, assumes no pay raises for the four bargaining units currently in negotiations, police safety, police management, fire safety, and fire management. So if there are pay raises that are negotiated as part of the current round of negotiations, those would have to be, or those costs would have to be added into the next year's budget. Item number four I have on that page, the budget assumes that the property tax revenue will be reduced by approximately $574,000. Again, that number is about $320,000 higher, based on the information we received today. It assumes, the budget further assumes, that the motor vehicle in lieu car tax backfill of approximately $1.8 million will continue to get paid. With the revisions we got this morning, that sort of will still happen, it won't be car tax, it'll be property tax instead. But again, I'll get into the details of what that, that whole budget deal being worked out at the state level is. And that the state, when they go through and have the quarter percent sales tax reduction, which means they will take a quarter percent of a city's 1% sales tax that we currently get, starting July 1st, through a roundabout way, transferred to the state, actually goes through the schools, hence the term triple flip. And that's 1.8 million dollars that we'd lose on that. That's supposed to be made up by increased property tax payments via the state, through the county, to us. And again, that, the budget assumes that that will happen. And the transfers out include the increases to the convention center expansion financing and some parking fund operations, and new transfers for the parking structure debt service and the master lease fund. Page two, and if we could have Rick Lee put this on the screen for the television audience, shows the revenue estimates, or revised estimates for fiscal 2003-4. And you can see, most or all of the change really is on the revenue side, we're estimating 53.4 million, expecting to spend 47.4. The transfers in and out, approximately about, transfers, net transfers out of about 5.5 million, would leave us with the surplus of about 400-
We'll call this meeting back to order. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We'd like to move into the 04-05 preliminary budget discussion. We have submitted to you a draft proposal of a budget. I would just like to just review quickly the process. We do need to have a council-approved budget by June the 30th. This study session will be our first discussion of a draft budget. We will also have this agendized for the next study session in two weeks. Our hope is to be able to have a budget for you to pass the first meeting in June. Of course, you would have additional latitude if you want to defer it until the end of June. Tom Canar is here and he will give us a budget presentation of the submittal. However, I would just like to frame this discussion very briefly. The issue, the overriding issue for us this evening is what we have is a $4.5 million deficit. And that was a $4.5 million deficit until the governor came out with his May budget revision, which adds an additional $320,000 onto that deficit. So we're at about 4.8. I would just note that last year, we had a deficit as well. We cut out roughly 16 positions. This year, we are faced again with a deficit, not the least of which is because of the VLF issue and the other sales and property tax issues from the state, which is going to amount to about $1 million less that we have to deal with. I would also just note that Councilman McCullough had asked me this week to bring to you a budget alternative that did not have any safety cuts, fire and police. Of the $4.5 million deficit reduction plan that we have, about 1.2 million of that was in police and fire cuts. So we have in here also an alternative without any safety cuts, and that would be for your consideration as well. And finally, next week, I'm sorry, two weeks from now, the next study session, we had talked earlier about the possibility of if we do not want to lower the level of service, that the citizens may wish to choose to pay higher levels of revenue generators taxes. And we went through the list of what those could be. We are having some survey researched on a poll, and those results will be done for the next study session. The person who is conducting that survey research will be here to discuss the findings. So that will give council more information, and perhaps at that point, we'll be in a better position to decide if, in fact, there's any revenue enhancements the council would want to consider at that time. So this evening, we'd like to focus on the draft budget. And at the next meeting, we will come back with any guidance you have given us for changes. And we will also have a discussion of potential revenue generators and tax increases at that time. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Canar, and he will walk us through his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eddy, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. You have before you the preliminary budget for fiscal year 04-05, and we have some discussion, very briefly, about fiscal year 03-04, the current year that we're in. On page one, you have a summary, and I think you've seen this before, but just to maybe reprise this information. The major points that are in the budget. Continued high level of building activity will likely produce an operating fund surplus in the current fiscal year of about $465,000. Our original projection, when you adopted, or the council adopted, the current year budget was a $1 million deficit. The mid-year projection that I gave you, I think it was January 14th, was a $215,000 deficit. So we've made some significant improvements there, virtually all because of building and planning-related fees, just a phenomenal amount of building going on in the city right now. A status quo budget for fiscal year 04-05, which means no new revenue sources, no expenditure cuts, and more or less the same staffing levels and same expenditure levels, would produce a deficit of about $4.5 million. And as the city manager said just this morning, we got some additional information from the governor and from the League of California Cities, and I'll go through that in some detail later. But basically, that will add about $320,000 to that deficit. So we're at about $4.8 million. That would, if we adopted the budget it is, would reduce the operating fund reserves, the actual cash reserves that we would have in those funds, in the general fund and the community promotion fund, to about $3.5 million. It says $3.8 million there, less than $300,000. The current year budget, or the budget proposed before you, assumes no pay raises for the four bargaining units currently in negotiations, police safety, police management, fire safety, and fire management. So if there are pay raises that are negotiated as part of the current round of negotiations, those would have to be, or those costs would have to be added into the next year's budget. Item number four I have on that page. The budget assumes that the property tax revenue will be reduced by approximately $574,000. Again, that number is about $320,000 higher, based on the information we received today. It assumes, the budget further assumes, that the motor vehicle in lieu car tax backfill of approximately $1.8 million will continue to get paid. With the revisions we got this morning, that sort of will still happen. It won't be car tax, it'll be property tax instead. But again, I'll get into the details of what that whole budget deal being worked out at the state level is. And that the state, when they go through and have the quarter percent sales tax reduction, which means they will take a quarter percent of a city's 1% sales tax that we currently get, starting July 1st, through a roundabout way, transferred to the state, actually goes through the schools, hence the term triple flip. And that's $1.8 million that we'd lose on that. That's supposed to be made up by increased property tax payments via the state, through the county, to us. And again, the budget assumes that that will happen. And the transfers out include the increases to the convention center expansion financing and some parking fund operations, and new transfers for the parking structure debt service and the master lease fund. Page two, and if we could have Rick Lee put this on the screen for the television audience, shows the revenue estimates, or revised estimates, for fiscal 2003-04. And you can see, most or all of the change really is on the revenue side. We're estimating $53.4 million, expecting to spend $47.4. The transfers in and out, approximately about, net transfers out of about $5.5 million would leave us with the surplus of about $464,000. And obviously, this is an estimate changeable between now and the end of the year, but I think it's a fairly reasonable estimate. Page three shows you the projected preliminary budget. And again, this is before any changes, before any cuts or any other new revenues that may be decided upon by council. The revenue, we expect to be about $55.7 million. Appropriations, $53.3 million. Again, transfers in and out, and a projected deficit of $4,453,000 plus another 320. So approximately $4.8 million. Page four gives you a summary of what's happened over the last couple of fiscal years. We ran a small surplus in fiscal '01-02, a small deficit in '02-03, and as I said, a surplus from the current year, and then, of course, the projections for next year. And page five gives you that information graphically. And a couple of years before that. As in the good old days, Mr. Mayor. 99-00. The revenue comparisons on page six gives you a graphical representation of our major revenue sources, the transient occupancy tax, or TOT, property tax, sales tax, utility users' tax, and more and more building and planning fees. And you can see that even, well, the building and planning fees has about tripled from where they were in fiscal 00-01. There's still a relatively small portion of our total. We have pretty good growth in all of the revenues. Utility users' tax is relatively flat. That may pick up as we have more housing units come online, and especially if more people move here. Obviously, the utility usage will increase, and we should see more revenue there. But for right now, I was fairly conservative and did not include an increase for next year. Page seven gives you some detail of where I expect the budget to be and some history on line items, primarily through the, on the revenue side. Property taxes, expect to go up about 3.69%. This will have to be revised substantially with the changes that the governor is proposing. I shouldn't say so much to the governor. I guess it's really negotiations between the League of California Cities and the governor, but the changes that are being proposed. So it's going to increase property tax, but reduce revenue in some other places. That already had included a reduction of $574,000. So we, you see where I've projected the percentages out there, about a 3.7% increase in property tax collections. That probably would have been about 7.5% to 8% if we hadn't had to contribute, is the term that the League of California Cities is using, contribute money to the state. Transient occupancy tax, I took up fairly modestly, about 4%. And the motor vehicle license fees, up from the level that it is this year. You may recall, because of all of the change-out in governors, originally, the car tax was going to be increased, and the cities were going to be made whole, but we had a couple of months, three months, where we didn't receive the additional backfill, as they refer to it. Now, the car tax is going to be permanently reduced. So we'll still get car tax, it'll be at a lower level, and the backfill, if you will, will be transferred up into property tax. So it's really kind of a shifting where the titles of the revenues, at least that's what the promises are from the state right now. It was about $800,000 for this fiscal year that we didn't receive from the backfill because of the timing difference between July 1st and when they actually increased the, temporarily increased, the car tax. That money is supposed to be paid back to us in fiscal year, or sometime after August of '06, so fiscal years '06, '07. I don't have that in any of my future projections because I think it might, I think it's likely that the state is not going to be able to afford that. If we get it, then that's great, that's found money. But at this point, it's not in the projections anywhere. And certainly not in the current fiscal year. We increased, all the, you know, the transfers in and out are pretty much the same as most other years, except that we increased the amount to the convention center expansion debt service based on the rate increase in the TOT and dedicating that to the expansion. What we'll have to do is put that money aside for a couple of fiscal years because we have a big debt service payment after the construction period is over, after the capitalized interest is used up during that period, and the city is obligated to make something like a balloon payment. It's about $5 million in that first fiscal year, and then it goes to the standard debt service payment for the rest of the life of the bond issue. But we'll have to put that money aside between now and then.
What was the date for that, Dan?
Mr. Mayor, which date?
I was trying to get the date for when that started.
The debt service on the convention center in fiscal '06, '07, November. Page eight gives you some information about other revenue sources. And if there's any particular questions on that, a couple of new things that are coming in. Well, maybe I could mention a couple of things. Again, the increase in the development types of things and the documentary stamp tax, which is a tax that the city and the county impose jointly on sale of properties. That increased substantially from periods of a couple of years ago. New development tax, which is obviously building-related, it's 40 cents per square foot, has also gone up a lot. And building permits and fees, I have increased that one substantially. I originally thought we would probably be about at the same high level as the current fiscal year, but we've increased that because the rates themselves have been increased recently, and they go into effect May 19th, I believe. So we're expecting about the same amount of building activity, just that the fees are going to be considerably higher, and that accounts for that, the amount of the dollar increase from $1,007,000 or so in the current fiscal year to $2,175,000 next fiscal year. A couple of new revenue sources, we'll have, we have a development agreement that's currently in place with the Agua Caliente Band of Que Indians on the casino. That payment starts in November of next year, or, excuse me, of this year, so next fiscal year, starts at $100,000 a year and goes up. I don't recall the exact amounts. It goes up to $200,000, I believe, after about six years or so, steps up. Three years?
300.
300,000 a year, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the all other revenue included as a category in all other revenues, down substantially. That's because we have every year a lot of one-time kinds of things that generally are dedicated for specific purposes. So, you know, a donation from an outside entity to fund a project, and we generally have those offset. So that's why you see a fairly major decrease in that particular line item. And that's just a lot of, you know, 100 different accounts going up and down. So we expect that to fall from the current year of about $1,005,000 to about $1,000,000. And that's all of the revenue. So what effect does all of this have on a cash balance? For the current fiscal year, we start at January, or, excuse me, July, June 30th of 2003, with about $7.8 million. If we have a surplus of $464,000, we'll have a bit more than $8.2 million at the end of this fiscal year, June 30, '04. And I should point out again, that's the operating fund cash. We have cash in a lot of other funds, but it's restricted. So the airport holds its own cash, the wastewater treatment plant, risk management fund has to maintain cash balances, cash reserves, and so forth. This is the money that you can spend without restriction.
Forget the others.
Well, there's, you know, you could borrow that money. There's different ways to access it, but they are reserved for specific purposes. So they are not included in these totals. And the total, the city's total portfolio ranges somewhere between $35 and $45 million a year, depending on the time of year and the property tax collection payments, so forth. Anyway, so if we adopted the budget the way it is right now, you'd end up, and it would have a deficit of about $4.8 million. You'd end up the year with about, and that would be June 30, '05, with about $3.5 million in cash. Page 10 talks about the factors contributing to the deficit. And actually, I took a look at the one I did for this last year when we had somewhat of a similar problem. There was a lot more things going on last year. It was easier, really, to do this page. The PERS retirement cost went up almost double, about 90% compared to last year, a dollar amount of $3.6 million. The health insurance cost, again, we had a healthy increase, if I can use that term, in that, that was about 12% or 14%, but that's about $570,000. And the other major item is the transfer of property tax from the city to the state of $574,000, now coming from other sources, but the net transfer will be about $893,000, not necessarily all from property tax. I should point out, too, that that's in addition to the $2.6 million the state already takes just from the general fund, and that started in fiscal '92, and has been ongoing since then. So it's a substantial portion of our total budget deficit is due to the fact of state actions over the years.
Would you repeat that for me, please?
Yes, sir. The state has taken $2.6 million in a direct transfer from our property taxes. They also allowed the counties across the state to charge cities for property tax collection, something we had gotten for free before. That probably cost us another $200,000. And they took away other miscellaneous revenue sources, oh, of at least $100,000 to $200,000 a year. That's about $3 million, ongoing before we get into this fiscal year. It doesn't count the money that they've taken away from the redevelopment agency. And our estimate, or the estimate we've been giving, given for next fiscal year is about $475,000. So it's a substantial portion of our total budget is being redirected to the state. Page 11, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Folt.
Will that, will that change at all if the initiative that's going to be on the ballot that the League placed on there, that we helped get on there, will that change any of these projections? Or is this something that's going to happen in the future?
It will keep it from getting any worse in the future. And the deal that the governor and the League of California Cities are working out or is working out will have some effect on that for future, but it won't make it better. It'll just keep it from getting worse. It'll keep the state from taking additional amounts in '07, '08, in future fiscal years.
So the legislation is not in any way retroactive or can't change back the VLF or the, or the sales tax or anything like that? So it's just looking ahead to future years? But in future years, it'll stop them from robbing us?
It'll, I don't know if I'd use the term robbing, but...
It's okay.
I would.
It'll, it'll stop it in future years, yes. Page 11 has some detail, and we already have gone through the revenue side of it from the other page. Could just talk briefly about on the expenditure side. And, you know, really, it's pretty much everything, is the PERS increases. And that went up because CalPERS, the city's pension plan, California Public Employees Retirement System, had substantial losses in the stock market in prior fiscal years. And our rates for '04-05 are based on the results of their investments in large part for the fiscal year ended June 30, '02. So we're, the actuarial calculations are a couple of years behind the actual results. And so we're just now starting to see the really, the real impact, the worst of the real impact of their losses. We were projecting wages to go up about 4.3%. Roughly 2% of that are the new positions for the planning department. And the general unit, and, which are clerical maintenance, non-supervisory positions, have already negotiated, or they didn't get a pay raise this fiscal year. They're getting a 2% pay raise starting July 1st. And the same thing with the management, professional, and supervisory group. Also, no pay raise this year, getting a 2% pay raise. So that's where we get the overall increase of about 4%. At the request of Councilman McCullough, a couple of council meetings ago, I've projected out, on page 12, out to, all the way out to fiscal year '08, '09. Obviously, the further out you get, the less reliable the numbers are going to be. You have to make some fairly large assumptions, and a small percentage change early on can really change the results. But essentially, what it shows, I think, is that revenues will grow a little faster, I think, than expenditures. Unfortunately, not fast enough to eliminate the deficit by itself. We'll have some good things happening. The convention center will come online, and we'll have more room nights, more transient occupancy tax, more sales tax. It appears that Walmart will be built and up and running in about a year and a half. We won't get the full result of that because of the triple flip that I mentioned earlier on. State's going to take some of that money. But that should also boost our sales tax up above what you might find, just the average increase because of cost of living or something like that. And the rest of the revenue increases, I expect to go up modestly and for future years. As I said, the expenses on, probably the biggest thing I think is going to happen in fiscal '06, '07 is that we'll have a flat, or no increase in the PERS costs. I think that will, obviously, the salaries will, we're projecting a 3% increase in salaries if that happens. But the PERS, I think, the PERS rates actually will go down because the stock market has rebounded somewhat. It's not doing so great the last week or so. But PERS isn't at the position they were a couple of years ago, where they were losing 8% or 9% or 10%. They should have at least a positive earnings. I think the rates will start to flatten out, and we'll see some savings in that. And as you can see, the, but if we do nothing, that we can anticipate deficits pretty much going out, all the way out there. I don't think there'll be anything, unless something just really major happened. You know, you just had some kind of, all the car dealerships in the valley relocated to Palm Springs or something, something like that, so.
Ms. Folt.
I think we took some criticism for our vote on the convention center. And I think there's some misunderstanding out there in the community, and I just wanted to call attention to that, that the building of the convention center, the way our very talented finance person has financed the bonds, we are not paying additionally, it's about $100,000 or something, $100,000 and change, additional for this new convention center per year. And I just wanted to point that out because there was a lot of criticism that we were spending all this money on the convention center.
Well, I think the perception is that we are using general fund monies to do that. And, but, it's a good point, thank you. I was going to say more, I'll hold it until later.
I have a question, since you brought that point up, is the TOT does not appear to be increasing to the $2.3 million and $2.2 million of the convention center expansion.
The $2.3 million that you see there are the eventual debt service, and actually, that will probably be a little bit higher in the outer years, probably about $2.6 million. But that's built into the total TOT collections. I didn't show it as a separate line item here, but the rates were increased in January of 2003, 2002, and again in January of 2004. And those rate increases are what are producing the additional TOT that will pay for the debt service.
But I see an increase from '04, '03, '04, out to '05, '06, of $1 million. Isn't that correct?
Right.
On TOT, from $12,850 to $13,894. That's $1 million, however, the convention, the financing is over $2 million.
Right, and that's because the amount of money that's being generated for the financing is coming from the rate increases that are included in that...
So there's a general decrease? There's a decrease in occupancy, then, that's offsetting the rate increase?
The rate increases went into effect this fiscal year, and those are built into the current year estimates. The increases that I've projected out for '04, '05 and for future fiscal years are based on growth. And some of that would be just general inflationary increases in hotel rooms, and some of it will be new... will be new growth from the convention center, the expanded convention center.
I still have, if I go back to oh one, oh two, or oh two, oh three, I've got twelve million and twelve million four. We're still, we're still not covering, we're still not a two million dollar increase.
Yeah, the TOT, total occupancies, or maybe a better way of looking at it is total hotel rentals, have been fairly flat the last four years. And, but starting from this point forward, we're expecting some increases.
So we're, the increment, there's two elements here. There's, the increment in the percentage is supposed to cover the, the financing. However, generally, we're down some in, in occupancy rates. And if you had a flat adjusted rate, if you adjusted for the rate increase, which I think you have done on some of our prior reports, there would be a decrease in TOT collections overall.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ready, did you want me to handle the budget balances? Do you want to go through that?
I had another question while we're on these pages. The PERS costs were under, just under four million dollars in the revised oh three, oh four. They've increased to over eight million dollars. And I understand that because of the stock market performance, that, that was going to increase, but my, I, I was anticipating that going out in the future, where you projected further, that when the market had, that market's already rebounded some from the, the bottom where we were, it's causing us to pay the eight million now. Why is it still flat? Why isn't that number coming back down closer to the four million dollar level?
It could, I don't know that we're going to get down to that level really quickly. And partly, what PERS also does is flatten out the increase. So you don't pay for everything all in the first year. So it's over a period of time that you'll pay for this, for, in effect, for their stock market losses. You know, sometime in the future, if they do really well, yeah, you could see a substantial decrease. And, and if you recall from prior reports that I've given to council, you know, our, our rates were, well, they were zero for the non-safety employees, and about seventeen percent or so for the police and fire. I don't think we're going to see those rates in the near future. They might be better than I projected here.
When we look at transfers in historically, from the PERS, in oh, one, oh two, it was seven forty-five, and in oh two, oh three, it was eight fifty. So that was money that was budgeted for PERS, and it was super funded, so it was transferred into the general fund.
Yes, we showed it.
That helped balance the, the budget in oh one, oh two, and it kept the deficit from being over a million dollars to only three hundred thousand in oh two, oh three.
Right, those were savings on PERS in those years, right. We put together a, on page thirteen, kind of a laundry list of items that, for council's consideration, to try to get to, to get some handle on balancing the budget. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go through these line by line, or do you want to just open it up for questions?
I think that's general.
Okay.
Line per line.
We broke it down into reductions of one-time projects and programs, ongoing programs, personnel reductions, revenue increases, and then, as a final alternative, taking some money from reserves. The first item is a reduction of capital projects in the library. This is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. These are, is a transfer of funds from the general fund to the capital projects fund to pay for library improvements. It was part of the Measure Y ballot issue a few years ago, and essentially uses the extra utility users tax that was generated as a result of that ballot issue. But in this case, we wouldn't do it. Capital projects, again, for the parks Measure Y money, we're proposing that use ninety-five thousand of that. It would have been, if we don't take this out, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, so we would still have some money dedicated for some parks projects. We would eliminate, in the current fiscal year, the ninety thousand dollars that we have budgeted for the animal shelter design. We have the city attorney, as was referred to earlier, has agreed to some reduction in rates and some restructuring of, of his workload, and we expect that that would save about a hundred thousand dollars. We're proposing a reduction in the budget for tourism. That's the contract. I guess it's been extended again until October with SMG to run the city's in-town tourism operation. Contract currently, annualized, would be a million four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and we're saying, we're proposing to reduce that by two hundred thousand dollars. The parks maintenance contract, and this is one we can do really easily, because Ms. Folt mentioned earlier and, and read the letter, PacWest has agreed to forego their cost of living increase that is in their contract, that was within their rights to claim, and that will save the city twenty-nine thousand dollars. I'm proposing to take back to the council an action that would authorize the city to advertise the old deposits that we have in our trust and agency fund. Private companies are required to sheet that money to the state, but the cities, or any city, can keep that money. We have some really old money in there. We've attempted to locate the people, haven't found them. It's a fairly simple process. You put an ad in the newspaper, nobody claims it in thirty days, it's general fund money. And we think that that will raise fifty thousand dollars. And we're proposing to eliminate the fire department intern program. This is a program that was funded a couple of years ago, but for various reasons, has not been implemented. It's a one-time fifty thousand dollar appropriation, and that would go away. So all of those one-time programs or, or projects would save about seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. The ongoing programs, we'd eliminate funding for the foreign trade zone, seven thousand dollars. Economic development and marketing, ten thousand dollars. The office of neighborhood involvement, twenty thousand. Excuse me. The support for the Miss Teen USA pageant, and that's for the two thousand and five pageant. The way we budgeted was to amend the current year budget for the pageant that's occurring this year, this calendar year. But the one for next year would not be funded. That's a seventy-five thousand dollar savings. Eliminate the contribution, the city contribution for the Easter Bowl tennis tournament, fifteen thousand dollars. Eliminate the K-9 program in the fire department. This would not reduce staffing, unless you count the dog as a staff, I guess. But it would eliminate that program and save thirty-one thousand dollars. The mounted police contribution is ninety-six hundred dollars a year. I think there was a reference, or somebody mentioned something about cutting the mounted police. I mean, that's a separate organization and their own nonprofit organization. We contribute some money to it, but it's not a city, a direct city function, although they do a lot of things for the city. And there's a line item in next year's budget, and there has been in prior fiscal years, unallocated council priorities, essentially a contingency account of seventy-five thousand dollars, and we would recommend eliminating that. On the personnel re-
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The mounted police, is that for, chief, is that for, is that your mounted unit, or is that for the mounted police?
There's a distinction here. I'm not sure.
Yeah, there is, there is some confusion on what that is. This is for the mounted police volunteers, not the police department mounted enforcement unit. So there are two distinct programs. The mounted police have told me that this, there is a history with this ninety-six hundred dollars, and that's involved in the appropriation. That's why this thing, I guess this is also in the parks and recs, so it's really not a police department function.
Because there were some reports in the paper that the, that these budget balances included cutting the mounted enforcement unit. Is that true? Is that, are we going to get to that?
It does not include it.
Because that was reported. Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
I think that's the confusion in the newspaper between what this was and the mounted enforcement unit.
On the personnel reduction side, we're recommending the elimination of the deputy city clerk's position.
I, I would note that that's, will be an attrited position, that, that the incumbent has retired.
Elimination of the director of procurement and contracting, and the fire department, the elimination of a fire marshal, and six firefighters. We should note that whether that is achieved as a, a reduction in a fire station or a paramedic program, either way, would still have to be a negotiated item with the fire safety unit, because that would mean it would be a reduction in minimum matting. And that's included in their current labor contract. In the library, actually, this is a reorganization suggested by our librarian, city librarian, Barbara Roberts. And this is something that, for the most part, I reckon positions, we think, can be rearranged, and it's a net reduction of one point one position, and will save about fifty-seven thousand dollars net. So that's something we can do without too much pain to anyone. And the police department recommends the elimination of a police commander position, one police sergeant, two police officers, and the drug prevention officer. And in public works, we'd eliminate one fleet maintenance tech. There's brief explanations on the pages following this, coded to those, the numbers that we have on there, if you want it. And then, I think that if you wanted to get into any detail as far as the impacts of any of the budget cuts, that the individual department heads ought to address those.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pundey.
I guess this question is for you, Mr. Ready. I'm just trying to find, in the item from the police department with proposed staff reductions and impacts, in the chief's discussions here, we have the elimination of three narcotic detectives. Where does that fall in this list? Or is it not in this list?
Actually, as I would, if, chief, could you come back up and address that?
The proposal that I submitted to the city manager was how to mitigate the loss of the personnel. And what I proposed, that if we go down the road of the cuts, that instead of taking the sergeant, that we take three police officers. And how I get those police officers is through the narcotics detectives. I would essentially shut down the task force and shut down our undercover operations and fold them back into patrol.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just note, and the reason for that being, it keeps the maximum number of officers possible on the street on patrol, although at the sacrifice of the, of the drug
Thank you. Going to the revenue increases, we only have three here, and we didn't include anything that required a, a vote. And that, those are separate issues for consideration of council. Any kind of tax increases would obviously have to be on the November ballot. We think that we can generate two hundred thousand dollars a year from the transfer station host fee, if we build a recycling facility. We have a recycling fund that we've been funding for several years now from the, a surcharge on the, that's paid as part of the garbage collection fee. And that money would build the plant, and then this would be the city's revenue, once that plant gets in operation. And Mr. Bootslaw will give you more details on that, if you need to know how that might work. We're suggesting that we could put on a nine-one-one emergency communications fee. This would reimburse the city for about seventy-five percent of our, the cost of running our dispatch center. It would be a fee that would go on to the telephone bills for every bill that you have in, within the city limits. And we expect that that would raise about nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Again, there are some details to that, that it's, we're apparently experiencing some, experiencing some resistance from Verizon about whether or not we actually can do this. It has been done by a number of other cities in Northern California, but no one in Southern California, so.
And if I could add to that, Tom, the state law allows us to do this to pay for the operation of our nine-eleven communication systems. In the past, we have not taken this. In the past, the general fund has subsidized it, but given the current situation, is recommended that indeed, we do make that actual collection. Thank you.
And the last fee that we would propose is a business license processing fee. And we think that by charging twenty-five dollars for new licenses and fifteen dollars for existing licenses, that pays for the cost of the administration of the business license system. It's not an increase in the tax itself. The tax itself has not been increased since nineteen eighty-eight. But rather than go through the, the whole vote requirement, we think that this is a fee that can be recovered. This may be folded into the overall study of city fees and charges. As you know, we just recently went through the, the fee study, but that focused only on building and planning-related fees. And we're extending that study to cover all city fees, and this probably will be one that will be included in there. And finally, the, the last category are taking money from reserves. We're suggesting that we would take four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from, of the current fiscal year surplus, just use that money and essentially roll it over to help cover next year. And at this time, and this was the balancing amount, another hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars from accumulated reserves. So you would be spending down the existing cash balance by that dollar amount. And again, we have another three hundred thousand or so to, to try to find. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
Tom, just a quick question. Number, number twenty-seven, the last one, accumulated reserves from prior years. Where is that money now? Is that in that?
It's in cash reserves.
Okay, so that, that's in that eight point five, or?
It's about eight point three million at the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes, I have a question. In the paper, the editorial was mentioning the Easter Bowl tennis tournament, and one of the things that I've asked whenever someone comes to the city council for money is that we look at what kind of revenues would be generated by TOT and sales taxes, obviously an estimate, not directly traceable. Do you, for the, for items twelve and thirteen, which would be Miss Teen USA and the Easter Bowl, do you have a ballpark figure for general fund revenues that are, would be created by these expenditures?
On Easter Bowl, I have an estimate of what the total TOT is. Now, there's some discussion about, you know, is that because you have Easter Bowl here, we're paying some money to have it in? Are you displacing existing hotel rooms, anyway? And Riviera is the host hotel, and they assure me that that's not the case. But if we cut this out, you know, then it would be a case of, well, are they actually going to come here or not? Or is this just a contribution that helps sweeten the pot for them? If we lost it, the estimate that I have was about forty-five thousand dollars of TOT and sales tax combined. And on the Miss Teen USA, I'm trying to remember, because they, they had brought some numbers to the council when it was first authorized, the seventy-five thousand dollars. And I think the direct TOT was, if I'm recalling correctly, somewhere around twenty thousand dollars. So that, you know, the major benefit of something like that is exposure, not direct revenue. Thank you.
Ms. Folt.
I just had a question, because I was, and I guess Troy, this is your question. I thought that, that the transfer station host fee was going to be three hundred. Is that?
This is a minimal amount. It actually can range to a high of one point three million dollars, depending upon which proposal we go with. We thought, based upon when we thought we might be entering into a contract, when the facility may be built, that two hundred thousand dollars was a reasonable estimate to give for the upcoming fiscal year. Obviously, depending on, again, the vendor that we, we select, and the deal that is constructed, that dollar amount could change, but we feel two hundred thousand dollars is a comfortable number to go with.
Thank you.
Troy, isn't the biggest problem that you're not, you're lacking a whole year of collections? And what percentage of a year are you assuming?
Right. We're, we'd be basically losing about six months' worth of collections, so two hundred thousand dollars is probably a reasonable estimate to go with for the six months of the fiscal year that we would be collecting money on.
Yeah, no, I thought that what we had said was three hundred was a reasonable thing to go on, so it's just a.
Yeah, if we were to do it on a annual basis, it could generate upwards of three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, that would be the base, depending upon which proposal we go with and the deal that's actually drafted.
Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, on page eight, line item nine, referring to plan checks, you, you had commented up above. I'm. You had commented up above about the building permits and fees, and I understand that your increase in that was somewhat due to increased fees. But you are essentially then, with, you're showing a decrease of plan check fees by 2.46% for this 0405. So you're saying we're going to have fewer plan checks than we currently do.
I threw all of the increase into the building fee to make the calculation a little easier. So it's going, both fees are going up, planning fees and building fees, but for the purposes of the schedule, I got lazy and put everything in one place.
Is lazy a Z or an S?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Kind of on that line that Mr. Mills was talking about, on page eight. So we've taken, the estimate fortunately was up about $750,000 from what you prepared last year's budget for permits and fees. It's helped quite a bit. So you're using the 1.7 and saying, hey, we're going to be flat pretty much, correct? If we just assume the same amount from last year, and that increase in the fees gets you to the 2175?
Right. I'm saying that the current fiscal year, that we'll have about $1.7 million in fees, that the total amount of building next fiscal year will probably be about the same. And you may ask our planning director, Doug Evans, if he thinks that. But I think the consensus is that things are still steaming forward pretty strongly. And all of the increases, the, due to the rate increase, right?
Maybe Doug and Don, to talk a little bit about that. I know it's very difficult to project, but, you know, they've got their, they're right at the pulse of that. And actually, like, both of them maybe to come up and talk a little bit about the activity and if they think that it can sustain or even increase, because obviously we see dramatic differences. What's that? Oh. I might have missed my appointment.
Very quickly, from a planning perspective, you know, permit entitlements and the like, we're still extremely busy. We have people still submitting subdivisions and development activity, so I anticipate that we should be equal to or better than the current year we're in.
I would concur the same on building permit activity, construction, to sustain as we are going now in the next fiscal year.
Because, you know, if we, in forecasting, or even forecast a 10% increase, or if I, it can make a dramatic impact on some of these numbers as we look. I mean, I would hate to be sitting here next year, and all of a sudden we are another million dollars ahead, which we could be, I know. But then we've made some real drastic cuts as well this year. And so it's really a forecasting. If we're flat right now, even a 10% forecast or increase here could have a significant impact, because obviously we were much more than 10% from the previous budget year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
Tom, you want to move to page nine now, regarding cash reserves. What is the recommendation, a percentage of budget to keep in cash reserves? And what's the council done in the past or tried to maintain in the past?
It's been somewhat of an informal policy, but it was a recommendation of a previous budget task force that the reserves, and my suggestion, that the reserves be 15%, which is roughly a couple of months' worth of cash flow that you should have in the bank. And 15% of $50 million is about $7.5 million, so we're slightly higher than that right now. Obviously, if we adopted a deficit budget, we'd be considerably lower than that. There isn't any really hard and fast rule in government accounting, and some cities have no reserves, and some are comfortable with 5%, and some want 100%.
But our goal in the past has been 15.
15%, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. McCullough?
On that same topic, looking at the, page five, where we have the history of surpluses and deficits, and in fiscal year in 2000 and 2001, those numbers total up to about $6 million. Is that where you built these $7 million that's in the bank?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
On page 14, we have some alternatives of other things that we can do in lieu of the safety cuts. And we tried to at least come up with about the same amount of money that the, cutting the safety positions in police and fire would save. On one-time projects and programs, again, the Economic Development Fund, there's about $396,000 in there. About four years ago, the city council sold some land, and the money, it was general fund land, and so the money was placed, there was $465,000. We've spent about $70,000 of that on the Share the Legend ad campaign downtown, and this is the remaining balance. It's never been allocated to any other specific purpose. It's currently a appropriated amount in the general fund. What would happen if council chose to use this as part of the budget balancing, the money would be disappropriated, would become part of fund balance, and it would become part of reserves that would help offset next year's deficit. City manager is going to be asking all the departments to reduce the travel and training budgets across the board by 50%. This is travel and training and conferences and everything. This would save, if we were able to accomplish that, about $121,000, so.
And I would also note that the vast majority of this is mandatory training, police, fire, building code, in those sorts of expenditures. And we think by doing it, there are some things we may be able to forego for a year, but this would be the bare minimum.
Item number three there, we asked, or we wanted to see if we could have the Community Redevelopment Agency pay at least a portion of the part, or the property tax, rather, that the city is going to be losing to the state. About the maximum amount the CRA can afford next year is $400,000. That plus the additional amount that the state's taking away from redevelopment agencies, and specifically ours, would pretty much wipe out any kind of capital projects for next fiscal year. And our Economic and Community Development Director, John Raymond, can address any of the issues on that, about projects that would have to be postponed or perhaps put off Ongoing payments, or programs, rather, one of the things we, kind of doing some research, came up with, is there's ability for the city to actually prepay its, most of it actually of the, its PERS obligation. So we pay, write a check to CalPERS for the entire amount of the obligation on July 1st. And then we pay one of two ways. It either comes from reserves, if we have a large cash infusion, and we have the cash to pay it, we can do it that way. Or we can borrow the money at taxable interest rates. And the net savings either way, because if you spend cash, then you lose the ability to invest it. Anyway, the net savings is about $230,000 a year by, in effect, taking advantage of a discount that PERS would offer us by paying it all at one time. Wouldn't cost the city anything. Other than that, the money would be sitting with PERS, and instead of paying it bi-weekly the way we do now at the end of each payroll, it would be paid all up in one lump sum. And one final small item, we threw in there, the trauma intervention program. It was a program added just last year by the city council. It's $5,300, and threw it into the mix. So all of those things together, the one-time programs total $917,000, ongoing about $235,000. And it'd save about $1,152, which would offset the cost of the safety cuts, at least for next fiscal year.
Mr. May?
Ms. Foote?
I would like to hear from Mr. Raymond about the, as we cut the CRA budget. But in the meantime, while it's coming up, the $5,300, TIP is a SEVAG program that all the cities contribute to. And I noticed in the last set of statistics, Palm Springs had more calls than any other city in the valley. So we make, we make better use of that program. For people who don't know what that is, it's trained volunteers that go out to crime scenes or accidents or whatever it should be, and are standby for people who are victims and who assist victims through deaths or crime or things of that sort.
It's a counseling program.
Counseling, yes. And so I would really not like to see us cut that, because that is, I don't remember what the figure was, but I think it's last year, they had 8,000 calls or something like that. Anyway.
Well, we've passed out, and council member Foote, it's right next to you, to your right, a list that John Raymond had prepared on the cuts to CRA, and he will go ahead and explain those in more detail. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question while we're on the TIP program. That's a new program. Didn't it replace another program that was a volunteer program?
To the fire department.
And the Cathedral City is still currently using the all-volunteer, no cost to the city program that this replaced?
Yeah, I would like the chief to answer that question, just so we get the correct information. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the TIP program has been in place in the Coachella Valley less than a year. I think it went into effect in October. It replaced a program that we've had in effect in Palm Springs, which was a volunteer program, was in effect for approximately 14 to 15 years. We referred to it as our Support Seven or Chaplain Program, and it was functioning in Palm Springs and Cathedral City. Actually, it started in the early days, Coachella Valley wide. Cathedral City and Palm Springs maintained the program for the duration of that period of time. And when the TIP program came into play in, through SEVAG, we disbanded our volunteer program and replaced it with a program that costs 12 cents per populace, or the $5,300 to Palm Springs. Cathedral City chose not to join the SEVAG program and is indeed continuing with the Chaplain Program that we initiated long ago. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foote, you had a question regarding redevelopment, or do you want Mr. Raymond?
No, I just wanted Mr. Raymond to go over what would.
You haven't seen the draft agency budget, but the, we had $400,000 in, it's shown on the budget as unscheduled capital projects and $500,000, and that's in Merge Area Two and then $500,000, Merge Area Number One. But the breakdown, as we, as we put the budget together, in the CBD, in the Central Business District, we're starting what we hope to be a three-year program of powder coating or repowder coating the streetlights downtown. Over the last 12 years that the decorative streetlights in the downtown area have been up, you know, they, the people put stickers on them, and they write out magic markers, and they kind of get repainted. And if you look at a number of them closely, they're starting to look pretty dingy. And Jerry Ogden's been working on that. And we were, we budgeted $60,000 this year. We're going to budget $60,000 next year, and then $60,000 the year after, to do them like one-third, one-third, one-third. So the $60,000 is the second year. We haven't, we haven't contracted, we haven't done this year's yet, so we're going to do both years, hopefully this summer. On the purchase and abate property, we're in the middle right now of appraising a piece of property on Indian that we're looking at potentially, if the price is right, acquiring and abating a nuisance on Indian Canyon Drive. I budgeted $155,000. I don't know if it'll be higher than that or lower than that, but that's a kind of a target number. That would include the abatement as well. In Tacles Andreas, which is in Merge Area Number Two, we had put some money in last year for the Arenas Road Streetscape, and that was a continuation of the type of improvements that we did on Arenas between Encelia and Indian, continuing down along where the new Marquee Villas will be built on the north side of Arenas. It would only be one side of the street, but it's a rather long block. And then Andreas Road Streetscape, as we, as we're working through the convention center and the downtown project and the sort of linkage of the convention center to the downtown, and where we have the new Prairie Schooner parking lot, we're looking at potentially doing a decorative, you know, pedestrian streetscape with street lighting and to make it much more pedestrian-friendly than what's, than what's there right now. Those were $200,000 each, and those are just estimates, but that's what we had budgeted this year. In the Highland Gateway area, we've had a couple of requests from industrial commercial builder developers up there for some, for some assistance on some street improvements. And there's actually one, there's a sewer improvement that, there's a request on Radio Road where there's actually, there's some industrial properties that are not connected to sewer, and it's not really cost-effective for the private party to put the sewer line in there. So that's kind of holding up a fairly sizable industrial project, and that was about, and they're about $60,000 each, one for a set of street improvements and one for a sewer improvement. And then Project Area Number Nine, which is part of Merge Project Area Number One, if you recall last week, you just approved a change order on the design contract for the sewer project where we'd be putting, adding a lift station, and that's the connection of the visitor's center to the, to the, to the end of the sewer line that comes up, I think it comes up Junipero. And we've got a budget number of $125,000 in for the actual construction of the line. And then the visitor, and then we have, we put some money in for some visitor's center improvements to sort of complete things. So that's, that's what they are.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
JR, have you given any thought, along with Mr. Ogden, about getting rid of 70% of this?
Getting rid of 70% of?
Isn't that what's called for here?
Well, that doesn't work.
Well, get rid of all of it. I mean, we, we have a ERAF.
No, it says 400. Getting rid of 400,000 of your 900.
No, we also have an ERAF bill from the state for the agency of 467. So if you're talking about ERAF...
So that takes the other part of it, is what you're saying?
Takes the other part of it. So we, our ERAF this year was $277,000 just for the agency for, next year it's going to be 467, and then what we're talking about is another 400 on top of that. So it essentially wipes all of it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our budget presentation, unless there's additional questions or the council wants to give direction, or if the city manager has additional comments.
Mr. Mills?
Just, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question, Tom, and you may have it in here, and I didn't see it. We are projecting for next year even, an even greater deficit than we're looking at this year. Is that correct?
If you're referring to fiscal year '05, '06, yes, slightly higher.
Okay. Thank you.
But with time to qualify that. With time to qualify that, that was a good question by Councilman Mills. That's presuming we do not deal with the deficit this year. If we eliminate the deficit by cost reductions, then what is that? It's still the $5 million next year?
Oh, no, no, I mean, it's not new money. Obviously, if you come to some conclusion, and either increase revenues or decrease expenses, and solve the problem this year, it'll remain solved for the future fiscal year.
Well, except for, you have a lot of one-time savings, so that's one of the reasons why you've broken that out.
That's true, yes, yes. The one-time savings, you'd have to find some other way to fill those in next year again.
I don't understand that, because if PERS is going to double, if we make, we're making budget cuts this year, I think what the Budget Task Force was clearly telling us, that all we're doing by making these cuts, eliminating this police officer here, and that library program, and that animal shelter, is getting us through another year. And, and we just can't do that. I mean, it is going, we are going to be in a deficit budget next year, too. I don't see how that would change, just by what we're doing with the increase that we're going to have, just naturally, in employee costs, and cost of living, and other areas. So, I mean, I think we really, in addition to these Band-Aids that we're putting on this year's budget, I think we, as a council, need to make a real commitment to, to doing the future things that need to be done, in, in cutting our, in cutting our costs across the board. And especially, we have to start looking towards our staff to, to come in to help us. Because I think that there is not, and, and I, I saw one of our members of our Budget Task Force, who's the head of a large corporation, shaking his head earlier, I don't know of any major corporation that pays 100% of retirement, 100% of health insurance, in perpetuity. And, and I, I think, I mean, I'm proud that we were able to do that for all these years, but we're not able to do it anymore, and I think we have to look at the future, and how our employees can help the city. I'd much rather, if I was an employee, I'd much rather take a cut in a benefit, so that my, my, my associate that was working with me, my colleague, wouldn't be cut. And, and I think that, you know, employees are going to have to kind of look at that, and see that we, this can't go on forever.
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, I certainly agree with Ms. Pho, and it's, it's like I had mentioned earlier, we've really got two issues before us. One is balancing this budget today, so we can get it balanced, and, you know, start working towards a longer-term, real fix solution as to these issues of the benefits. I mean, wouldn't you agree, Mr. Canar, that is something that's going to be impacting our budget for future years considerably?
The cost of the benefits? Certainly. It's always the major cost of running a government is employees, the labor cost, and a significant portion of the labor cost, total cost are produced by the benefits. And this year especially, because of the PERS benefits.
And now, we've got the very difficult task of unfortunately having to make some real serious cuts to make the balance, just, you know, the budget just balance, which is what we've just gone through, and none of that is easy.
Mr. Mills.
Tom, stop me, stop me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that when, when we were super-funded, that money was used to balance the budget during those years, which is why those years looked good, or part of the reason why those years looked good. Is that correct?
Yes.
Have we taken that super-funded money at that time, and put it in a little account on the side, knowing that things weren't, be all so rosy at necessarily in the future, then we'd be in much better shape than we are right now, although we would have had to make cuts at that time also, to balance the budget. Is that basically?
You would have had to make some cuts back then, yes.
Okay. So, you know, the, the fact that, so what we really did is just push it. And we pushed it, we made it work for us at the time. We, we were able to give some benefits at that time to the city employees by, by having that super-funding, that in a sense is, you know, making it a little difficult for us at, at this time. The, because I, because I, I've heard, I've heard the comment that, well, you know, had you taken that money back then, and do just what I said, put it in a little account, and knowing that things wouldn't be so great, I mean, we would still have dealt with it at that time. I mean, the, the, the problem is still there, we just prolonged it. We just pushed it.
You said to stop you if you're wrong, this is partially correct there. We did take the, what was called then, the super fund, or the excess surplus that we had in PERS, and in effect, took a credit against some monies that we would have had to pay them anyway. And so, yeah, we could have saved that money, and I think Mr. McCullough pointed out, it was about $800,000 a year for a couple of years there. The other part of it was, we didn't pay PERS for a big portion of our employees, and because we didn't have that cost, that's what drove those surpluses in the 90s, late 90s, and I think 2000. And that money, in effect, was saved. So, that was put aside. I mean, the alternative would have been to actually have paid the money to PERS, which would not have worked out very well, because they would have invested it and lost even more of it. I, you know, we kept it, and it didn't grow really great, but we didn't lose any of it either. So, it's kind of a, what you said is correct, if we had been completely prudent, I guess, maybe, or very, very conservative, we would have put all of the savings aside someplace, and, and that would have entailed making some cuts back then, but we'd have more money to ameliorate the extent of the budget deficit in the current year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, along those lines, this came out in the Budget Task Force, when I, when I served on that, was that in negotiating with the safety units, was, wasn't the city's strategy, since PERS was super-funded, to shift more of the compensation package to benefits? And that, so that for the year that they were working in, they didn't have to increase salaries, the general, there was a general increase in compensation, but instead of writing a check this year for increased salaries, the idea was, well, we can increase the, the PERS benefits, we can move it to the 350, and it won't, we won't be out of pocket anything. And now, that too, because of the market decline, is coming back to catch us. So, we're kind of, we're getting double whipsawed, from what Mr. Mills just spoke about, and then that strat, that, that strategy of increasing compensation to the safety units by enhancing the PERS package.
Yeah, that's a big part of the total, when we gave enhanced retirement benefits to city employees, and, and to all, safety and, and non-safety employees, the cost estimates that we had from PERS were very modest, and we said, oh, this is pretty good, you know, we can give pay raises, or benefit raises, and making the employees happy, and it's not costing the city that much. And then it kept the wage demands down. The city's actual salaries have grown fairly modestly over the last several years, and, you know, they haven't gone up 10% a year, or anything like that, maybe two, I'd hazard a guess, I'd have to go back and do the math, but probably less than 3% a year, certainly including the current year, probably 2% or 2.5%. And so, that, allowing that benefit to go forward, saves some money. Turned out, though, that PERS estimates were wildly optimistic, and that benefit, along with the losses in the stock market, cost us a lot more money in terms of a PERS rate than we had anticipated.
And there's really nothing we can do about that as a council at this point, right? Those benefits have negotiated, and they're there.
Not without negotiating some, some different kind of benefit package.
But that's outside of this budget discussion.
That's, well, there's a contract in place for the management and supervisory employees, and one for the general employees, that you can't abrogate that one. The other four bargaining units that cover the police, and fire management, and non-management positions are currently in negotiations.
Thank you.
But I really think it's important that we, we say, okay, maybe that's not going to help us today, but we need to look at that to help us going down the road, because otherwise, every year, the people that sit in these seats will be faced with that same deficit.
Mr. Mills.
Tom, again, stop me if I'm wrong, or partially wrong, but.
It'd be 10 o'clock.
Or when it gets to the 10, either one.
I'll watch the clock for you.
If, if I understand the PERS system correctly, it's very different than private industry retirement fund, package funds, in that private industry, you know, if you're fund and invest in the stock market, and the stock market, the stock market does well, well, you do well. If it doesn't do well, then you don't do well. PERS essentially guarantees the return on the money, and am I, am I explaining that correctly?
Yeah. PERS is a, what's called a defined benefit plan, so you earn a certain percentage for every year of service. So, if you work 20 years, and you're a police officer, and you have a 3% per year of service retirement, once you've completed those 20 years, and you're a certain age, you could get 60% of your, your salary, or your last year's final salary as a benefit. And I don't know that much about private pension plans, or what it is in private industry, I mean, there's a whole variety of them, but a lot of those are defined, defined contribution plans, so it's like a 401K plan. You put money into it, and if it does well, you can do really well, if it, if it doesn't, you don't have as much for retirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are, in private industry, there's both. Define, there are defined benefit plans, and with the market goes down, the employers have to put in a lot of money, and that's one of the reasons why there, why there's a lot of 401K plans right now.
Mr. Canar, earlier there was a common comparison, in comparing private sector with the public sector, pretty much with our salaries, and our compensations, and benefit packets. Are they pretty much in line with other government or public agencies?
Yes, I think they're fairly comparable. I mean, last year, I think it was, as part of the Budget Task Force, I did a little study, and I took a look at Palm Desert, and some of the other local cities, and we were very close, actually, probably a little less than, than most of the other local cities. You know, statewide, I think we're probably in the middle someplace, in terms of benefits.
I would agree that we, we face some major challenges in some decisions. Some of the things that I've seen and hear in terms of potential cuts and things, I just couldn't support, I just don't think that they'd be to our benefit in terms of providing service to our community. But I'd like to clarify a couple of things. I think it's important to understand that, as a city, we, we only have one industry, and so, there were some comments made tonight about some of the investments. Well, those investments were made to support the only industry that we have, and that's tourism. People, some of the people made some comments about the, the film festival. Well, out of the film festival, you have to understand that while it's not a heads-and-beds, event at this point, or TOT, it is the best marketing plan that we could ever purchase for $350,000. Now, people are talking about sponsorship, but we paid $350,000 for the title sponsorship of the, of the premier event that takes place in our city. I don't think that's something we want to give up. That says who we are, which increases our opportunity to get more tourists to come to our city. It identifies us. The same thing with the Convention Center. When we talk about development, or improvements in certain areas, you're also looking at categorical funds, funds that have to be spent in those areas. So, when you start looking at things, and, and looking at some of the decisions, I think it's important to understand that all of those things do not come out of the general fund. It is the fact that we are a tourism, a tourism-generated economy that produces the quality of life, and provides the jobs that we have in this city. So, if we want to secure jobs, we can't stop, we can't afford to stop investing in what brings in income into the city. I do agree that there are some things that, that we have to look at for the future of the city, but in many ways, this is déjà vu. I've sat through councils, and we looked at privatizing, and I've, matter of fact, when I came on, we had made significant cuts at that time. A couple hundred people, I think, we let off, right? At that time, when we, that the parks, yeah. And, and I've watched over the years, the fact that we sold all of that equipment, and we let all those people go, and gradually, we hired in a firm that every time, something new that needs to be done, that adds, and so, now we've seen those contracts, in spite of the fact that they may be offering us discounts today, they're higher, or as high as what we were paying then. So, I think if we've got, whatever decisions we make, we can't afford to look at just the cost now, but how this will play out five, 10 years from now, and that we simply don't repeat this scenario. You know, it is, I know that it's disconcerting for employees to have to come under this kind of scrutiny every few years, and I understand that. And having sat here long enough, I hate this time, I really do, when people are, you have to make decisions about whether or not jobs are going to be cut, because you're not just talking about cutting jobs, you're talking about affecting people's lives. But we're also talking about direct services to the community, and, and all of those things are important. And I have the utmost of confidence in our employees, and in the council. I know that creatively, we may have to look at some things a little differently, but the bottom line is, we all care about the city and the people who work for this city. And I think that we can find some solutions that will be beneficial to all. That certainly is not going to be easy. But when we look at some of the costs for the future, some of those things are inescapable, but I think we also have to look at, how do we balance that? Because you know better than, than most, if we hire incompetent police officers, or firemen, or anyone for that matter, that we will end up paying for that, because of their incompetence in so many other ways. So, it's striking that balance. And I, I know, we always look at the private sector comparison, but I guess when the entire public sector starts doing this, fine, but if we're the only ones who do it, we're going to be significantly impacted in trying to hire competent people. So, within the context in which we have to operate, that's going to be a major challenge.
Always exciting to be the leader.
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
I would certainly like to echo your, your, your comments, and I think there's, there's one thing that we haven't talked about at, at this meeting, anyway, and that is Mr. Canar's bottom category, which is revenue enhancements.
This is a tough crowd, this after-tilt.
The revenue enhancements we haven't talked about are, are simply fees or taxes that we have, that we have, that we have discussed earlier. And I personally think we need to look, as a council, to, to pursue some of the things that we, that we, that we talked about. We talked about admissions fee, we talked about, as the Budget Task Force did, the 911, which, which, which Tom does have listed here, but the admissions fee's not on here. We talked about police and fire, public safety tax, I don't even remember exactly what it was, and we talked about utility tax, we talked about several things. And I, I do think that we need to look at that also, along with everything else that we're looking at, and see where that fits in. And to what, to what extent it fits in, what amount is going to generate what dollars, and we balance it the best we can, and then. we can, and then look if that is a source of revenue enhancement. And if we're going to do it, then we need to get serious about it. And our time is running thin. Is that right, Ms. Clerk?
What is our timeline, Ms. Allen Clerk?
Okay. So I think that should be a part of our discussions at our next budget get together as well.
Mr. Ready, you had briefly mentioned, so why don't you expand on the more detailed timeline for the discussions about those?
At the next study session, we intend to, like I had mentioned, to have some results from some poll data that might help council in deciding which of these would have the best chance to succeed. So the overriding question then to council is, in as an alternative measure, if we go forward with the November ballot, there's a timing issue here. Let's say we put off some of these cuts to see the outcome of that election. If we're successful, then, you know, we move on without a whole lot of disruption. If we're not successful, as you know, there's a time lag between you can make these kinds of cuts. And of course, then the general fund won't be able to make up the full amount of savings. So there would be a certain amount of fund balance we would have to commit to use throughout the year. So that's one scenario. If we go down that path, then we would, in essence, not do potentially, say, the safety cuts. Some of these one-time things, we still could do. But again, it depends how much of fund balance council would want to use until we get to that November timeframe and see if the ballots are successful.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Felt.
But that timeline is much longer than that, because if something passed on November 2nd or 3rd, or whatever the election date is here, there's a longer time period until we actually start collecting that. So if we're going to talk about that, I'd like to see how long down the road. Like, if the admission tax passes on November 2nd, by the time we see any substantial income from the admission tax, it's going to be like six months from then. By the time we get process in place, and they start collecting it, and then remitting it. So that's a long time down the road. So it's not just if it passes in November. And I'm not sure what the timing would be, depending on what the other taxes are.
We did lay out that scenario, and you are correct. And that's why it would have to be a combination of two things. One, we would have to make a series of some of these cuts, the one-time cuts, and then probably an allocation of at least $2 million from fund balance to deal with that eventuality. And Tom, if you could explain how you would see the income coming in under that time process?
Well, it depends what you put on the ballot. Utility users' tax, since it's already in place, it'd probably be fairly simple to change the rate. I would expect we could get the utility companies to implement that by January 1st of, after the November election. Trying to, I think that's what we did when it went from 4.5% to 5%, passed in November, implemented in January. And so you'd get, because of the flow is from telephone and gas, and not just all electricity, you'd pretty much get about half of the amount that you would normally collect in a full fiscal year. Admissions tax, I think, might take about the same amount of time. I don't think that's that complicated to get in. And we don't have that many different venues that would be affected. Something like a parcel tax, though, would take a whole year, because you'd have to put that on the property tax rolls the following fiscal year. And I don't know any way to bill something like that to individual homeowners. It'd have to be part of a property tax bill. So you wouldn't get that one until the following fiscal year. I don't know if you want me to go through some of the other types of taxes, but those probably are the three most discussed, so.
Once we decide which ones, you know, after we do our survey and talk to the citizens, I think it would be really important for us to then have a timeline of when we are going to see any money coming in from that particular tax, and then also what that revenue would be, an estimate.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes. Now, since we're talking about tax increases in the admissions tax particularly, it's my understanding that Indian Wells is the only other city that has that tax in the valley. Is that correct?
Yes, in the Coachella Valley, they charge currently 3% of the ticket price at the Indian Wells tennis garden.
Essentially, that was because of the tennis garden.
Correct.
So we're in competition with other cities for theater tickets, et cetera, et cetera. So there's not any one else, other than Indian Wells, which I don't think has any theaters, that has this tax currently.
In the Coachella Valley, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for some direction, do I hear from council that you would like to make some of these cuts and hold back some pending an outcome of an election? Is that a scenario that you're feeling more favorable towards? Or would you like the full deficit reduction in a budget?
I will be hard pressed to support any budget that relies on a November election. But I don't think that's where we're going with the discussion. I think the discussion was part of that long-term solution to make sure that if we identify some, we fully support them as a council, we move them forward, and then we know what they're going to bring to the city, so it can impact future budgets. That's kind of the way I was reading that discussion. But I would be hard pressed supporting a budget based on an election.
So then I understand to bring forward the budget as it stands with the reduction of the $4.5 million deficit, or with the non-safety alternative?
What was your first option again, please?
The original budget as submitted, the draft, has the $4.5 million worth of budget balancers. And actually, that is correct, it's at 4.8. So the other $300,000 is not accounted for yet. That would have to come from fund balance, along with the additional 630. So you would have a certain amount coming from fund balance. Or would you like the alternative, that gets the same amount of savings, but without the safety cuts?
Let's start there, the first one.
Do we, Mr. Mayor, what's the timing of this on our, we've gotten a lot of material here in the last few days. I haven't had an opportunity to really study that. For us to be giving you almost final direction at this point, I think is premature.
All right, that's not a problem. What we can do is, we certainly can wait until next study session. Council does not actually have to approve the budget until June 30. The second council meeting in June is, I don't have the date, but you could even have a special meeting up to the 30th. So you certainly have time flexibility.
Once he brings us something, it's going to be cut to pieces. And then it's going to be a week before he can bring it back. So the clearer the direction at this point, the easier this process is going to be, or we'll be down to the wire having special call meetings.
Well, then I prefer the second option that I'd request, and with no direct firings of police and fire personnel.
Let me ask a question, I could, Mr. Mayor. When the cuts that we see in public safety, were those cuts that were negotiated with the departments, or were those, in other words, is there potential to go back to the two chiefs and look at maybe other cuts that may not be bodies, but would be programs, that would be whatever, other than people?
That's a good question. And I would just need to preface that the only reason that I'm suggesting safety cuts is because last year, we cut out the 16 positions. Now, for the record, I need to clarify, the DARE and PAL programs in police were uniformed officers. What we did is we moved them to patrol and backfilled them with civilians for a saving. So those are the cuts we made in safety last year. The rest of them were all non-safety. This year, to get the level of savings councilman, we had to have, what we have here is about $1 million, $1,200,000 in safety savings. Now, there's been a lot of discussion with the chiefs. There are other alternatives indeed. But the biggest expense, of course, is personnel. So to get that level, I'm not sure that they can make that level of cuts. Certainly, we can go back and try and look at it. And I'm sure the chiefs have additional scenarios. But it was the level that we were trying to achieve.
Okay. I just want to be clear on part of what Chris, they did participate in this process with the recommendations for the cuts that we're looking at.
Well, I wouldn't say that any of these here are particularly strong recommendations from any department heads there. And as you can appreciate, the chiefs are very sensitive about cutting back on a service that they're already very, very hard-pressed to do. And I have to say, this has not been an easy process for any of us. A caveat here is, there is minimum manning and fire personnel. If that is not negotiated out of the contract, then this cannot occur. So there is a huge caveat in there as well.
Okay.
I think where I was headed was that, you know, we are looking at for round number 1.2 in public safety. And if we go with the route Mr. McCullough's suggesting of leaving that in and finding alternate means to pick up that 1.2, could that 1.2 be 1 million? Could it be, you know, 800,000? I'm not suggesting that you're going to pick up the 1.2. But are there, is there potential within those two departments to maybe modify that number somewhat? That's where I was coming from. And not knowing where you got, where these numbers came from exactly, hence why I'm asking the question. Maybe that already happened, I don't know.
Well, two things. One, I would be hard pressed to make a cut without having at least the acknowledgement of the departments where we're making these cuts to at least say something about the impacts. When it comes to whatever option that we look at, you know, I think we have a responsibility to look at everything. And one of the things, I don't think that if we look at the no cuts, what we're, we know we're going to be back here doing the same thing. So we know that we have to look at, that's not security, to me. That's just saying, well, we're not going to do anything right now, but, you know, next year, we're going to be right here doing the same thing again. And I don't want to do that. If clearly we have to do that, I don't want to do that. But I don't want to pretend like we're dealing with something. And in essence, it almost says that we don't really have the crises that we have. And we do. We seriously do. And I think we need to acknowledge that and pull everyone in to see exactly what we have to address.
So Mr. McCullough indicated-
Well, I agree with Mr. Mills that we need to have the both chiefs participate in this process. I don't intend to, as a council person, to try to micromanage the police department or the fire department and tell the chief how many captains he needs, or tell Chief Chinrin how many commanders he needs, or how many sergeants he needs. He knows how many he needs. However, I don't mind going to him and asking him to cut $800,000 out of his budget. But prefer we don't cut, we don't hand pink slips to police officers and firefighters. I think public safety is the first priority of government, and I don't want to see that happen on my watch.
Is that clear?
No.
It appears-
I'll take it as, I have some clarity. And let me come back to council. In two weeks, we will have the discussion on the revenue side. And I think I have some information we can refine these numbers and give council a couple more scenarios, if that will help. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to say that last year, we told a lot of other departments how to run their department by cutting people out of their budget. And I think that we need, as a city, to make some very difficult decisions. And they're not popular decisions, and maybe in some ways, they're not going to get anybody reelected. But the fact remains that this city has other things. It has fire, it has police, but there's also other services that people in this city rely upon. And so we need to be very careful when we're looking at this budget, that there is not a class of employee that is an untouchable. I do want to see the police and the fire department come up with some other way of balancing our budget, other than cutting staff. But if that's the only way we can do it, then we have to make that tough decision.
I would only mention that I can think of a way real easily to, without cutting staff, to save $330,000 a year. So, and Mr. McCullough could too. So I'll make that comment again, because I intend on bringing it up as well.
Are you going to cut your salary?
I would be willing to do that. And I'm referring to the changes in the building and the planning department, which do not involve cutting any employees, which do involve essentially saving $330,000, if I remember the number right.
Appreciate the recommendation.
Members of council, I'll have a couple revised scenarios for you next week. Thank you. Excuse me, two weeks. And we do have the added starter, Mr. Mayor. And if I could ask Tom Canar to explain briefly what the governor's proposal is, and the question to council is if you would like us to write a letter of support and get it faxed off to the League for tomorrow morning's meeting.
Okay, I'll try to explain this. The League of California Cities and the Governor's Office have been in negotiations, in effect, about how much the city's contribution ought to be to the state's budget problem. And what they came up with is that the total amount that the cities will contribute to the state is $350 million this coming fiscal year, for fiscal year '04-'05, and another $350 million for '05-'06. And going back to the comment that Ms. Felt made earlier, then after that, you know, it's supposed to be untouchable, we're not supposed to get hit again. But it doesn't protect us from this year. The tricky part, then, is deciding how much everybody should have to pay, and how you devise the formula. What the League came up with is a three-pronged approach. The first thing that happens is that the vehicle license fee, the car tax, is permanently reduced from the 2% that it used to be a couple of years ago, three or four years ago, to the current 0.65%. So that means everybody that's been paying the lower rate for car tax, for car registration, they will continue to do that. What will go away, though, for cities, is the backfill, the amount that the state's general fund was paying to local government to backfill the fact that that rate had gone down. The state says that they will make that up by paying that money, taking it away from the car tax, but giving cities additional property tax. So that's supposed to be a wash. For the city of Palm Springs, that's about $1.8 million a year. So our car tax is going down, $1.8 million, from what you see in your budget. And our property tax, theoretically, will go up by that same amount. And then what they'll do is take away a portion of our other revenues, sales tax, property tax, and some additional amount off the car tax. The way they calculated that was to take the fiscal '01-'02 state controllers' report. And all cities have to report, all special districts have to report to the state, what our general revenues are. For the city of Palm Springs, our general revenues that year were $44,690,000. The formula that the League came up with says that no city can pay less than 2% of that amount, or more than 4%. So it's a, I guess, a floating calculation, depending on your relative amounts in each of those. The way it works out for the city of Palm Springs is 2% of that number, the minimum amount, or $893,817, basically $900,000 per year.
For two years.
For two years.
And then what happens?
Then the money, you know, we keep the property tax revenue. We don't have to pay this anymore. So effectively, it's a $900,000 increase in revenue after that. So it's a two-year contribution. And then we get the money back.
Happy to pay you Tuesday for a cheeseburger.
Also, in two years from now, in 2006, the state has also, as I mentioned before, has promised to pay back the $800,000 that they shorted us this year. So '06-'07 could be a really good year if the state keeps their promises.
Those are all your friends.
Right. But that's, I think, in a nutshell, I don't know that, I mean, it sounds to me like it's still a work in progress, and I don't know that this will necessarily be the way that it gets, comes out in the final iteration. But that's the way it is right now. Mr. Buslaf, you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to add, mayor members of city council, the League is meeting tomorrow in Sacramento, and they're having a general assembly to vote on this particular proposal that has been negotiated between the executive board and the governor. The request that we have before you is whether or not to send a letter of support to the League's general assembly indicating either our support for or opposition to this particular budget proposal. I believe the League is recommending that this is, in their analysis, the best solution that we could possibly hope for in the current budget crisis that the state is facing, and is recommending that all cities support this. And I think, Tom, David, and my analysis is, it could have been far worse, and there are some constitutional protections in here that otherwise wouldn't have been afforded to the city, or cities, had they not reached this deal.
Tom.
So the staff is recommending that we do?
With great reservation. But it's one of those things where you hold your nose and hope for the best in two years, because the alternative may not be as good.
And if I could add, because at the end of last week, we were having the city attorneys' conference for the Department of the League, and Chris McKenzie, who is the head of the League, came and spoke at one session, sort of talking about the negotiations that they were going to be entering into over this weekend to deal with this issue. And fundamentally, the way they looked at it was that although the League has this initiative measure that, if passed, could prevent this sort of takeaway from occurring in the future, the problem is that if the governor does not come out and support it, they're estimating that they would need to raise $20 million to try and get the thing passed, and they don't know whether it would pass. Whereas if the governor is supporting it, they feel pretty confident that, well, because this package, ultimately, to get into a form as a constitutional amendment on the ballot, they need to have the legislature. It gets onto the ballot by either the initiative process, or if it's going, it can get on by the form of the legislature putting it on. So this whole plan they're coming up with would have to go into a constitutional amendment, the legislature have to approve it and put it on the ballot, then the governor would support that ballot measure. The League's measure would still be on the ballot as insurance, but the theory is that if the governor is supporting this measure that has this whole plan in it, and he's out there heading the campaign, and he promised that he would support it the exact same way that he just supported the two measures on the last ballot. So this is really making this deal, which, I mean, it's certainly not a good deal to give up a lot of money that we really need. It only makes sense if it is only a two-year deal, and you're in good shape after that. So the reason for doing that is really believing in the governor at his word that he is going to follow through on this. And the governor has indicated to put this legislation together, he has to submit his budget proposal, and so he needs to know tomorrow whether the League is going to support it. And a number of representatives of cities have gone up there to have a general convention of all the cities, and we can vote by getting this letter in. But it's a very high-stakes thing. McKenzie's final word on this was that, you know, he went to the teachers, he got the teachers to ante up money. He's gone to various employee groups and gotten them to deal. He's gone to the University of California, the educational establishment, and the cities felt that they did not want to be the one group that said, "We're not going to make our contribution." So it is sort of a holding-your-nose thing, but the, I think everybody believes, although there's a low threshold of trust in the legislature, at this point in time, Schwarzenegger's done everything he said he would do. And so that's really our best bet, is to count that he will follow through on this, and that we can get a constitutional amendment on the ballot with his support and get it passed, without having to raise 20 or 30 million dollars to pass it. So that was kind of the political background to what was going on in this negotiation.
So do we need a formal motion?
I think if I just see a concurrence, I'll just write an informal letter telling them that the city council, in theory, approves it, and we can certainly put something on the next council agenda for resolution.
Which I would suggest that item number two on the appointments that we would do on Wednesday as well, next Wednesday, at council.
So it'd be a consensus of the council support, the city manager expressing it, that's the city's position?
Yes.
Do you want a formal?
No, we can't.
Yes, if we could, Trish, the clerk tells us that since we did add it, we can take a formal action.
Well, then I will move that.
I have a motion, and a second, a motion by Ms. Folt, and a second by Mr. Mills. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Pass this unanimously. Yeah. And we're going to continue item number two for our next council agenda meeting, so we will call this meeting adjourned.